No, Tucker is not.
On vacation.
Okay. Tucker is out tonight, so. Welcome, everybody. It's a regular meeting of on Thursday, March 18th, 2021 of the New Canaan Town Council. It's seven o'clock and this is a virtual meeting. And the meeting ID is nine two five one six seven one five three two. If anybody wants to join us live using Zoom. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please all rise. And let's begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, democracy, and justice for all. Okay, we can take our seats and letting one more person in. Rich Townsend, would you like to take the role?
Certainly. Robin Bates Mason.
Here.
Tom Butterworth.
Here.
Liz Donovan.
Here.
John Engel.
Here.
Stan England.
Here.
Mark Jimsky.
Here.
Steve Carl.
Here.
Mike Morrow.
And she advises the National Trust of Historic Preservation.
Maria Naughton.
Sarah has served as a visiting professor at Yale School.
Christina Ross.
Here.
Richard Townsend here. Penny Young. Okay, I saw her lips move. We have 11. We have a quorum. Mr. Chairman.
Excellent. Thank you. The meeting is called to order. Public comments. Members in the public are welcome to speak to the town council on agenda topics scheduled for review and or vote. Speakers are requested to provide full name and street address and comments will be limited to two or three minutes, subject to the total number of speakers. Does anybody wish to address the council? On any agenda item? Okay, there being none, we'll move on to the next item. So the item number three is our main, our main item. It's the budget overview. And first up, the Health Department, represented by Jennifer Eilson. Jennifer, the floor is yours. And you know what? You don't have to take 10 minutes. You can take as long as you want.
No, thanks. I'm tired. I've been here since four thirty this morning. So you all have our budget. What's new this year is Sanitarian that we moved from planning and zoning, actually. So she was a part-time position in planning and zoning. We've had her since May, essentially, and she's already passed many of her certifications. So she's been a huge help to me with working test sites, contact tracing, and everything that comes along with, you know, our lovely department. I've gotten two grants, one from the CDC that's for a public health nurse that you'll see down at the bottom, grant funded. That's fully covered. So it covers her for two years. So and Amy's been working our vaccine site and doing homebound visits on Mondays and doing contact tracing. So Amy's been a huge help with the grant. The metal, and then we got another grant, public health emergency preparedness grant. So half of that, that, all that money is paying for half of the medical director's salary. So again, it takes more away from not having to put it all in town, which is good because we don't get per capita funding from the state. So those were the two, those are the main changes to it. I did not increase any fees with revenue because obviously in COVID year, the restaurants are struggling enough and, you know, whacking them with higher restaurant fees was not my intention at all in the salons too, because again, with COVID, it's affected pretty much everything with revenue, except maybe the building permits. Those have gone up. So we haven't touched anything with revenue. We're keeping that the same. But those are the major things that we've added. Does anyone have any major questions?
Jen, I just want to say that you're a hero in town and we want to know whether you would like to be memorialized with a statue or is that's really old school? You've just done amazing, amazing work. It's phenomenal.
And you appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, I want to echo that and say even more specifically, you know, in the beginning, when the town was most anxious about testing, you stepped up and, you know, relieved a lot of anxiety and provided a tremendous amount of testing. And now, when the whole world is focused on vaccinations, Kevin informed everybody that you're once again stepping up. I mean, you've been fighting for, you know, your fair share of vaccinations. And now that you're getting it, you know, you are implementing it and vaccinating people to a far greater degree than anybody could have, could have anticipated or expected or even hoped. So really tremendous job. And I just think everybody should know how hard you've been working, you know, 20 hours a day for a year.
Well, thank you, John. And on that, you know, we were, I had to do a grant report today and I went back through all the testing through Stanford Hospital, Dr. Murphy with Wavine East in November. And the town, we've done over 9,300 tests just through the Health Department, through registration and handling all the testing and vaccinations to date were over, you know, 4,000 vaccinations, 3,000 first dose, 1,000 second dose. Next week, next Wednesday, we're doing 700. And, you know, it's huge. The state went from giving us 100 to, you know, now they're, you know, giving me a whole tray of Pfizer. And so it's, it's amazing, but we have such a great system now. It's, you know, like a well-oiled machine that we're like, oh, today, you know, our second dose clinic, we had 350. It's like it didn't even bat an eye and they're just moving right on through. So it's amazing. So hopefully they keep up with the allocation so we can keep up with this pace. So we can get more through, you know, and the education clinics went great, you know, Dr. Lutzey had his playlist. So it became a little party back there. It was a lot of fun. Now we're working on trying to get the 55 and over group that kind of were missed by Lamont's whole plan into the next wave with the 45 and over. So but it is going well. And everybody at the test site between all the volunteers from town, you know, Tracy Carl and Anna and Jenna, Jenny, and you know, everyone that helps out, all the vaccinators are amazing. The school nurses are helping out after school. I mean, it's just amazing to see how many people have stepped up. The doctors in town have been helping with the homebound vaccinations, helping with the clinic and will be working next Wednesday night with us when we go late. So it's amazing to see how many people have stepped up. And that's why I think makes New Canaan great is that you have that, you know, small town feel of everybody wanting to help out, you know? Couldn't have done it without everybody helping, that's for sure.
We're lucky, very, very lucky to have you. So thank you for all you've been doing and know that it's appreciated. So thank you very much. If there's no further questions, I think we can let Jennifer go home. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night. Okay, next up, Human Services Department. We have Bethany Zarrow.
Hi, everybody.
There you are. Floor is yours.
Okay, so we're looking at, first of all, the expenditures for the fiscal year 22. And if you go down, everything is pretty much the same from last year with salaries. The, we're keeping the number of four people in the department. The biggest change is general assistance. We normally have a $22,000 line item there and we have taken that out this year. Finance did an unbelievable job of going through the special projects line item that were kind donations throughout residents and foundations and agencies, clubs in town. And they had donated enough money that has not been used to where we think we can function with zero general assistance through the taxpayers, through the budget. We can work off of the special, special projects fund for about three years. So we would like to do, you know, cut back on that, but with also the understanding that when our special projects money and it'll, people will continue to donate. This is totally separate from the food pantry. That's another special project. This is just a general assistance. People have donated, telling them, telling human services to absolutely wherever it's needed. Please use it. So we would use it for food, clothing and shelter, rent, energy, assistance, camps for kids and necessities like that outside of the food pantry. So we feel we can sustain at least three years based on the money we have already. So that cuts down on the expenditure. Everything else, we've cut down a little bit here and there. Last year was the first year I started with the budget and I tweaked it and I'm tweaking it a little more this year, just fine tuning it in terms of the reality of how much we really are spending. So we're able to go down a few hundred dollars here and there. Then we go to the other agencies, the outside agencies that request money. They serve as resources in the town because the town does not have them themselves at human services. So it's definitely benefits the town and is prudent that we get an outside source to accommodate the needs of the residents. Everything is really the same. Actually, it is for in terms of the grants, except we had a huge kids in crisis. Historically, the kids in crisis, New Canaan was one of the charter members of it. And through the years, we have maintained, while we've maintained 56,000 roughly, it's really costs about 90,000 to have a teen talk counselor as well as the other amenities that come with the kids in crisis program. If there's a need for a child to be removed from the home, there is a safe haven for that child. Every, the, the the organization, the nonprofit runs 24/7 and they have done it through COVID. The goal now would be to maybe bring somebody in from kids in crisis at the middle school level. But in order to function at the high school level, they had been requesting this year $90,000. And that's always been the gap between the 56 and the 90,000 has been from organizations in New Canaan that have donated. Well, with COVID, it has definitely declined the ability for many of these organizations to help subsidize and get the 90,000 up so kids in crisis can remain. As a result, I'm asking and requesting that we continue kids in crisis. And there, there's a waitlist that of schools that, towns that want kids in crisis. Darien, they're waiting for an opening. I don't want to lose the New Canaan kids in crisis and they don't want to lose us either. So if we could take, accommodate the 90,000 this year to continue the teen talk counselor, which is totally separate, a totally separate counselor from the Board of, from the Board of Ed counselors. And so that anybody who does need help, it's completely independent, confidential, and they can follow a child, a family, all the way through a complete crisis into mediation needs for counseling and all of that. So that is the big outside agency, but with offsetting it with the $22,000, taking it from the general assistance and providing this kids in crisis counselor to maintain its high school. And I also would want to work on potentially getting funds possibly from other organizations in town. If we can maintain the 90,000 and then from the town, other agencies, we can get a middle school counselor, teen talk counselor to bring this into the middle school. Other than that, everything remains constant. And that is the look for fiscal year 22.
So you're feeling pretty good about this?
I'm feeling very good about this. The support of, we started out with, with a smaller amount requesting, but as we went through the selectmen and the Board of Finance, they were the ones pro on getting this. We don't want to lose kids in crisis and Kids in Crisis wants to work with us. But if we could definitely get the 90,000, which Westport does, all the towns are pitching in to maintain their counselor and the whole, the whole program that Kids in Crisis gives. And with COVID, we have had, you know, we do have more issues of kids, you know, everybody's feeling the crisis and having the kids in crisis is definitely a valued, a valued part of the town. And we want to maintain it and have them be pay our full fare.
Okay. Any questions for Bethany? Is Penny the liaison or is it Robin? Who's our, who's my liaison?
No, it's yeah, I am. And, and as I thought the questioning from the Board of Finance was, was interesting, Bethan, that I think is perhaps one of the first years that I've ever heard this question. Do you have enough to deliver the level of services that, you know, the community expressed? And it kind of, it kind of took you by surprise because usually it's, you know, we're going to be cutting funding. But I think it was a recognition that the level of service delivery, particularly during a situation like we're, you know, in the midst of right now, has, has really, really carried the community through some really challenging times and they're not over yet. And so the Board of Finance questioned you, you know, pretty thoroughly on, can, can you keep it up or do you need some more help?
So yes, we can keep it up. And the help is just from the Board of Finance, the selectmen, the support is incredible. And with that support, yes, we can keep it up. Last year, when you agreed, you approved the senior outreach caseworker, Marcy Rayan to come on. That has proved just absolutely invaluable with, then when COVID hit, it just, the whole thing came together and she definitely has taken the seniors and, and grasped the needs that they have needed and has have gone, has gone on and formed unbelievable rapport. And I do think it's changed the status of human services for the senior population.
Just so everybody knows, every single senior in town has been approached. And that's what, 1,500 people over the age of 75?
Correct. Yes, Penny.
And though the statistic is, at least from my knowledge of your meeting two weeks ago, was 92.5% have received vaccinations. And I'm sure it's a increase of that since two weeks ago.
Exactly. And now I think the Health Department, what we feel, those that have not gotten vaccinated, the outreach has been efficient and effective, but it could be health reasons by choice, you know? And so we do feel as if the accommodation has been there, the outreach is successful and the choice has been whether, you know, if they can get a shot, if they want a shot, they've gotten one.
Kudos to you.
Oh, yeah. It's been great working with the Health Department. We've really never before come together like this and using the, you know, Health Department, working with human services, getting the seniors taken care of. Definitely, it was just, it was a great effort.
I think it was Liz who I, I slighted a moment ago, right? It's Liz, the co, so do you have a few things you want to say?
I'm just saying it's, it's me and Penny and I, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. And it was, it's been a very exciting and sometimes frightening year to be the liaison to Health and Human Services. It's been great to get to know Jen and watch her at work. And you know, we've always known it's a great department and, and, you know, they just all, you know, with Bethany and Lee really stepped up when we really needed them. And I think they kept us all feeling as okay as we could and that, that we would be all right. So, you know, I'm glad that Bethany's getting her recognition and Jen and and I will echo Penny's kudos. Thank you from all of us.
Thank you.
Thanks, Liz. Okay. If there's no further questions, I think your, your, your evening's up, Bethany, and you can go back to, back to dinner. So thanks for joining us tonight.
Thank you. Any questions, just get back to me. I'm here.
Will do. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night. Okay, so next, the big show, public work, Tiger Man. But before you start, is Chris Shipper here because he's expecting to make a presentation and I, and I missed him on my agenda or are you?
He's kind of in me. The Bristow is part of the Parks Capital.
Okay.
Parks Fields Capital. So when we get there, we'll let Chris talk a little bit.
Got it. So I gave you co-host privileges if you want to show us anything.
We do.
Okay, the floor is yours, Mike.
Okay, thank you. Of course, every year, they whoever decides to schedule this schedules us after human services and health. It's always nice. You know?
Because they give money back to the town and you never.
Yes. In years past, they used to talk about the number of turkeys that they handed out and Christmas trees. And then we come forward and ask for money, right?
And once again, I think you didn't take the hint, did you?
No, they, we don't get the choice. They, you know, nobody wants to go after us. Nobody wants to go after me for obvious reasons. Yeah, you know, they don't want to wait. So thanks for having us. We have a half an hour. I figured we got a half an hour, half an hour, half an hour. So I was going to do a half an hour ad operating. And then a half an hour capital and then a half an hour of the building occupancy discussion. So we'll kind of get right into it. I don't know if you had the opportunity to read the 2020 year interview, 68 pages of, you know, it's a page turner, but we also put together our 2021 year in preview, in preview, I guess, we can share that with you as well. It's, it's almost finished this. And list, but our top 10 is actually a top 20 because there's just so we'll share that with you. We'll send that around after the meeting. But if we, if we get right into it and we look overall on our operating expenses this year, our budget stands at 10.898 million dollars. It's a $315,000 change or 2.99%. I will mention that when we went to the Board of Selectmen and got approval, we were at $189,000 increase or 1.79%. And then the Board of Finance was incredibly generous to the department. Helped us change one part-time admin to a full-time for the Buildings Department. Added in a part-time employee for the Parks Department. The Parks Department was historically low based upon after the acquisition of Irwin, we were always down one staff member. So they, we, they added a part-time employee. We'll see exactly what the cost savings are on that and how much benefit we get out of that. And then they added $45,000 into the tree line, the tree services budget. So those combined together brought us up and over the top, but we were originally underneath the guidance. But thankfully, they were very generous in their, in their offerings. So if I give it to you graphically, you can see sort of graphically, we are continually flat. We make our guidance every single year. And we try to maintain that throughout the, the largest number here, the largest driver on the top is the Highway Department and then down at the bottom. Teen Center, but you can see overall, it's a very, very modest increase year over year. Everything I think is below 2%, including our contractual obligations, not just for our staff, but for all the services that we provide, garbage hauling, sledge hauling, excuse me, recycling. If we break it down by, I broke it down into the big four items. Last year I did five. This year I did four salaries and benefits and contractual services, utilities and supplies. If you look at salary and salaries and utilities alone, that's 63, 64% of our budget that we have no control over. Then the other contractual services at 28%, that's that includes our sledge hauling, that includes garbage hauling, that includes recycling, includes the, the things that we have to contract out. All of our tree service budget is contracted out. The majority of our building maintenance is contracted out. Things of that nature that drive up that. And then the last is supplies, but inside that supplies is actually items that actually help keep us run as far as supplies for for our trucks and things like that for repairs. That's driven all out of there. So there isn't much room in the end as far as discretionary spending for us. A little bit in the contractual services, but then that, that comes down to quality of life issues for, for the residents. If I look at administration, administration and engineering have a corresponding increase and decrease. For a number of years, the administration budget had the Assistant Director, my previous title. And then for the first year or so, when Maria came in as our town engineer, I left it there and paid her out of that side just so it wouldn't look like there was a shell game. And now she should be inside the Engineering Department budget. So we moved it. So you'll see that while there's a decrease here, you know, negative 4.6% decrease, there's a corresponding increase on the other side for, for Maria and her, and her salary. So again, same exact thing. There's a corresponding increase here and corresponding decrease on the other side. There isn't much else changing throughout. We had a part-time employee in the Engineering Department, the previous director, Mike Pastor. He's retired and we still keep a number in there for part-time. And that's for a project manager that you, we utilize and some other departments utilize. Finance uses it and a couple of others. I look at town buildings, town buildings, the operating request is 1047. It's a $45,000 increase. We had an increase in our property cleaning services. That's contractual. We went out for a five-year contract for cleaning services. And that, in essence, is driven by an increase in the minimum wage. That's strictly where that is. We, we have had some increased cleaning costs due to COVID. We are, now we're getting back into the springtime. Our buildings, some of our parks buildings are opening back up again. And we have a crew that goes around all day cleaning the parks buildings and then going into the other buildings later in the day. So they'll go to me, Wavine East bathrooms, Battle Hut bathrooms, do those a couple of times during the day. And then do the other buildings in the parks. And then we have a corresponding crew that works through the other, the other buildings in town. And then, as I mentioned, we had a part-time staffer. We were sharing that with the fire, Fire Department. Bill Stamen, she decided that she wanted to retire and go down on a part-time basis. And the need for a full-time assistant on the building side, given the fact that we have one individual maintaining all of our buildings was paramount, specifically on managing the majority of the small service contracts and the cleaning crews. So the Board of Finance allowed us to change that individual from a part-time to a full-time. John, I don't know who that is, if you want to admit them or not, that I found. The are there any questions so far? I can only see five of you. So I apologize if there's a hand raised or not. If there is, just, okay, thank you.
Question.
Sure.
How many people are in the cleaning crew that go from location to location?
Sometimes they're just a pair.
And okay. And the total charge for that job is, is 45,000 plus 14,000? Is that?
45,000 plus 14,000. I'm missing.
Total change, 45,000?
The, I have a total change of 45. If you look at overall across the board, every, every line in the, in the budget itself. So there's, there's some corresponding increases here and there as far as what's going on. But our property cleaning year over year went up $14,550 on the contract.
So is that what the operating total reflects?
That would be operating total. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm missing. So.
The cleaning of all the buildings.
That's the cleaning of all the buildings. The cleaning of all the buildings, we have budgeted $166,400. It's up 14,550 from the year prior. That's based upon our contract, based upon what we're asking them to do. And that contractual change is strictly on their side, changes in the minimum wage, changes in their staffing as far as how much they're paying their staff. So it, it, in essence, balances out over the, over the five years, we were, we get hit a couple of years early and then last couple of years are a little bit slower in the growth on that side. We have asked them to do additional work because of COVID. But we've been able to absorb that inside our budget at present. Does that, that, that cover that? Okay, sorry. Thank you. Anything else on buildings? John, we good?
Good.
So on the Highway Department, the overall budget is basically flat. It's a point one three decrease year over year. We had some savings on our salary lines. We've had some individuals retiring. We just had an individual retire. Uh we just had an individual retire yesterday. As a matter of fact, they're put in his notice yesterday, thirty year employee. And we're able to then hire at a lesser lesser rate coming in. And we felt that the other changes we could necessarily work and live with over time, so. The only change that we made a little bit on the Highway Department is I added back in two lines that we had decreased last year. For to try to reach our two percent, and that was on our outside contractors line and our pipe cleaning line and the outside contractor line. Majority of that is used for uh snow removal in the wintertime and then some additional help during the winter for uh extra plowing. And then our pipe cleaning is uh whenever we go in to do a drainage job or or paving job, we go in and we we inspect. The pipes themselves, we clean them, TV them, jet them out and take a look and make sure that they're they're adequate. And um they don't need to be changed and the drainage lines don't need to be changed before we go and repave the road itself. Be ashamed to go in and repave the road and find out that the pipe needs to be done. So we go in and TV it, that that line itself, we had dropped by five thousand. I felt we should um with that back in whole this year.
Tiger, how many, how many F T D?
How many full time employees total?
In the Highway Department?
In the Highway Department of twenty six. Any other questions? Not in time, that includes managerial staff, our maintenance crews as well as our mechanics crews. So we so we we take care of the entire fleet. For the town itself, there are very few items that actually get shipped out. Some of the apparatus get shipped out at times. Uh we take care of the. Every town department, so police, some of the fire vehicles, uh some of the little ambulance work. All the town fleet for land use departments, everything for the Highway Department, Parks Department, transfer station, wastewater. Almost every piece of rolling stock that we have, a hundred and sixty two licensed vehicles, uh they take care of, so. If we roll to the transfer station, the transfer station is a fifty two thousand dollar increase or about three point three one percent. It is uh strictly all contractual based upon either uh second year term in our contract. Or a new term in our contract. We have a an increase in our household hazardous waste. We increased that by ten thousand dollars. That's a regional contract that we share. Last year, we were the only town to hold the household hazardous waste state. Everyone else canceled. We were the only one in the region. Um our residents are allowed to go elsewhere and we pay for them to go elsewhere if they if they uh go anywhere else in the region. We have an increase in our recycling and an expected increase in our garbage hauling. Um and as well as in our bulky waste, what we noticed over the past years is that we've had a an uptick in our bulky waste and our garbage. Overall, and it's slight uptick in in the recycling and it's mostly due to the fact that people are staying at home more, eating home more. Um and then necessarily doing a little bit more uh home projects, home improvement projects, so we're seeing those drive up. And so we kind of took that number, tweaked it down from what we've seen year over year for the entire year for COVID. And then said, we'll we'll definitely still see that for the first six months of next year. That's the that's what's being proposed, so we needed to put a little extra in the budget for that. So any questions on that? The only thing I will note is that the transfer station proposed revenues for this year are six hundred and ninety thousand dollars. We don't take that into consideration. But overall, um it should be mentioned as far as, you know, it might be a one point six three five expenditure. But it's also close to a seven hundred thousand dollar uh intake in revenues. And that's uh for some of our recycling and then for our tipping fees uh that are charged to the garbage haulers.
What are we gonna pay in capital? Capital side of the budget on the transfer station, do you have a salt shed in there?
I do not have a salt shed in there, no, but capital be in the next twenty two minutes.
Okay, so there's no, there's no transfer station capital.
There is transfer station capital. I'm I'm just doing strictly operating right now. Then I'll get to capital. I'll get to the good stuff later.
Okay, okay.
That good, okay?
We'll do it your way, okay.
Thank you.
So Tiger, I just have a question. So six hundred and ninety thousand gets put into the town funds. It doesn't appear at all in your budget.
Apart from the fact that, no, apart from that, that it's there on our revenue line, no, we don't, we don't see that benefit. That goes into the general fund. It doesn't go to offset our costs, it goes into the general fund. Uh Parks Maintenance Side. Uh the the current request is one point eight nine five million. It's up a hundred and eight thousand dollars from last year. Year over year, uh it's a six percent increase. We. Last year, we reduced our mosquito control from four applications to three. We felt it was necessary to go back to the fourth. The fourth one is mostly the triple E. At the end of the year in September, um in in order for us, we we're starting to see an uptick in those types of uh transmissions. Um and those types of insects carrying the disease, so we felt it was necessary to bring that back. And then we added in monies for our outside contractors and outside grass treatments. Uh during the year, we had a review of pesticide usage in town, if you remember that, uh on the Board of Selectmen level. And we went through and we analyzed two separate fields, Connor Field and Sax Field. Connor Field is treated with a one application of pesticide per year. Sax has none. Uh and when we had an independent analysis come in, Connor graded a B and Sax graded a D. Uh and D is unacceptable for us. Uh so the only way to do that uh without. Um an additional pesticide application is to increase overseeding and aerification. In order to do that, Sax and the other fields that we have that are that are not treated uh one time per year, there's sixteen acres. It's about a thousand dollars an acre to a to seed and aerify. And uh we're looking at increasing, right now we do it twice a year, we're looking to increase that to four times a year. And we're hoping that uh you know, based upon the analysis and consultation with uh uh the advisor that we had hired. Uh we feel if we if we double that, uh we'll see a commensurate increase um in our playability, a decrease in the compassion. A decrease in the hardness of the field, we'll be allowed to accept a little bit of water, a little bit better, and uh the playability will increase. So it's our, it's a, it's a way to uh combat the fact that that uh based upon the state law, we can't uh apply pesticides on those fields. Um and then, as I mentioned, uh the Board of Finance asked uh how we were on staffing. When Irwin was added, uh it was planned to add two members to our staff. Uh we received one at the time. We were supposed to receive a uh an employee and a and an assistant for John. During the past couple of years, we changed one of our employees to a an assistant for John, a working assistant, Todd declined, still doing a fantastic job. But we were still one man short. Uh so while they offered a full time employee, we uh countered with a part time employee. See exactly how we would balance out the load before we would add someone to a full time status. We wanted to see A, if the person would fit with us. And then B, how we would mix them into our crew and what would be the benefit? Would we see a a a decrease in some of our outside contractor services that we would need? Would we see an increase in our. Uh sidewalk snow removal, so it would give us a decrease in our overtime cost for the winter, things of that nature. And the only way to do that is to hire a guy part time, analyze it through the year, see exactly what that uh benefit might have shown us and then go forward. So that was a forty five thousand dollar and change increase um to uh to the Parks Department. Any questions? The uh.
Tiger, on some of those fields, there's been a goose issue over the years. How are we dealing with that? I that we drove by Sax and saw a couple hundred geese on there again. Are we are we budgeting to to keep the dogs going through there?
The geese relief? Yes, yeah, we have a, we have geese relief comes down to meat park. Sax is a different story. We don't necessarily treat Sax, we treat meat. We can, we can have them try to look and see what they can do. The geese are smart. They see the dog come and they see the guy drive in, they fly away. Geese are very, very smart individuals, you know, so but we'll continue to battle. The uh, we've seen them. Unfortunately.
Right, so is the plan in terms of eliminating pesticides a hundred percent or are we just down to sort of a one time a year?
I know you. We are uh based upon our IPM, our integrated pest management program, we're at a one application per year. For uh the fields that um it's allowed by law, actually, um it's actually less than that because we. It's K through eight is uh is the law stands for K through eight. We actually extended that through K through twelve. So any field adjacent to uh to one of our schools does not get applied, the other ones do. But so the thought through the Board of Selectmen was that uh we would ma- continue to maintain that one application per year. Uh it's a spot application, it's not, you know, broadcast situation. And then we would see if we increase some of our other techniques, see what would happen on those fields that we can't or we do not apply. So Sax Field, things like that, a couple of fields of waving. Does that answer your question, Steve?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Uh the Nature Center budget, um it's a little decrease. So based upon fuel, oil, propane, um we do a five year rolling average for our fuel, oil and propane. We throw out the high, throw out the low, average the other three, and then based upon that usage and um the current cost that we uh. That we went out for uh and received, most of the time we're buying futures, buying a year in advance um to try to time the market correctly. And uh this, we have a slight change in the Nature Center. Town utilities, town utilities are our streetlights. We pay a rental fee to ever source. Uh for overhead lights, these are not our downtown decorative lights, these are the Cobra Lights. We have about four hundred and eight in town. Or ten, I think now, it's a fine count. And then we pay for a hydrant service, hydrant service is paid to uh Aquarian. And it's based upon the size of the main, linear feet of uh how much main they have in. And uh there's a, there's a cost commensurate with a basically a rate, um an inch per foot rate uh that's calculated out. And uh then we pay a fee per hydrant itself for each individual height that we have. So we assume a three percent increase in our hydrant service. We don't get the letter from from Aquarian until after the budget season. But overall, on average, we've had about a two to three percent increase per year. So we had, we had, we assume a three percent. They're asking for anywhere from two and a half to seven and a half percent, and we historically have kept three percent. For the past probably ten years and we've been okay with that. Tree service, tree service was uh flat or close to flat. We had had it at a two percent increase, that percentage change is incorrect now. Uh we had it at two percent from year over year. And then the Board of Finance, in their discussions, knowing that we uh had been historically light in the tree service budget, added. Twenty five thousand dollars to the outside tree service highway budget and then twenty thousand dollars to the tree maintenance line, tree maintenance. Can vary anything from fertilization, pruning, air spading, to even if we chose uh planting new trees. So they uh they added that back in, they added forty five thousand dollars back into our request. I believe our request was an eight thousand dollar increase and they uh they they carried us the rest of the way. Any questions on tree service?
Yeah, Tiger, can you, I can you just give a little background on what what drives the tree service expense? What the broad view of uh buy you more or what or what happens when you go to less?
What happens when we go to less tree service?
Yep.
You'll have more power outages. The majority of the tree, the majority of the tree service line item is all removals. Yeah, either in the parks or along our roadways that are not ever source related. Anything that might be in the power lines or our tree warden does a fantastic job of working with the ever source arborist. And having them, you take care of the their responsibilities and we'll take care of ours, but you would see um it's it's strictly inside our right away. Majority of the work that we do, the we have a hundred and twenty five miles of road, so it's two hundred and fifty lane miles or two hundred and fifty edges that you're looking at. And that that area that we own is um anywhere from zero to twelve feet either side of the road. So if the road's twenty five feet wide and we have a fifty foot right away, it's twelve feet either side, so twelve feet deep, the entire length of the road. For two hundred and fifty lane miles. So it really comes down to just, excuse me, removals. He has this about ninety thousand dollars for tree pruning. Air spading, things like that, to try to save some of our larger trees or trees that are suffering, ones that we wanna wanna keep.
If if we put, if we put more in this budget, would we have any, i- is there any way to have a significant impact on the um reliability of our powers of our power to the town?
Ever source is doing it. Ever source has been very proactive over the past five, seven years since Sandy. And while we are still seeing power outages, I don't think they're as severe as they were. Sandy was huge. The rest of it, to give you an idea, Sandy was somewhere in the order of um. Five times greater than the last storm that we had, Esa used, as far as the amount of material that we took out. So you could, wow, you know, so uh um yes, so the uh the thought is that they're they're doing a lot of work along the right away. Last year, I think they pruned sixty three miles of our roads uh in town, sixty three, you know, their side was got power on one side. But they they pruned sixty three miles and uh then we're working with them on the rest of them, so um I don't. I can't say that if you threw, you know, you would be able to save a day, you're, it's not gonna happen that way. Because one, we're not in control of the other side of the coin, right? We're in control of uh helping them open up our roadways and at that point in time, we have to hand it back over to them and it's really. Based upon their, how much damage and then how many crews they throw at us. I don't think we're ever gonna get rid of not having power outages.
If we, if we had harsher regulations on our on our residents and how how big the trees were next to the power lines. Uh would that have any impact? I know I live right on, right on uh Main Street. And I got big trees right next to the power lines and the and ever source comes by, you know, says we wanna, we wanna cut this out of it. And I can very easily press them down to not do it. And I've, you know, my neighbors across the street, we've had, we've had trees that are huge and dead, just sitting there for, you know, years.
Well, if they're dead, we need to know, so.
Right next to the power.
Let us know and we'll hammer them to have those down. The majority of our uh work comes in from citizen, citizen activists or citizen requests notifying us of certain trees. Um there is a, there is a bill under consideration right now that would give. Basic control back to ever source on tree removal and uh the Tree Wardens Association and. The the majority of public works directors are not in favor of that. One of the largest complaints that we get is whenever source comes in to to prune or remove trees uh in front of someone's property.
Yeah, it's a real emotional, it's a real emotional issue. I was just wondering whether there's, there's anything that we could actually do to make a difference from a reliability standpoint. Either with money or with with uh with ordinances.
I uh the ordinance will be tough. I I know that the the, well. One of our previous town planners, a number of years ago, tried and um John probably remembers that and that did not go over well. As far as trying to um regulate removal of trees on someone's property, whether or not they can or cannot, that did not uh fly very well. Um I I so I I think it would be a. I I I think right now, I think we have a pretty good handle on it and I think that uh. Ever source is doing a nice job along with it, but I don't think that if we threw more money at it, we would see a market change.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Tiger, do you have, does the, does your department also do the state highways or is that taken care by the state?
State Arborist does the state roads and Bob works with the State Arborist on those as well. So if there are um trees on South Avenue that need to be uh taken care of or one twenty four, one oh six, one one twenty three. Bob will notify the State Arborist, we're not allowed to uh to um to do that. We are, we are responsible to maintain the site distances on either side. So low growing things that are in the site lines, our Highway Department is responsible for. So if you pull out onto a onto a state road and you look left and you can't see, that's our responsibility, it's not the state's, according to the state. So they uh they only take care of their right away and if and uh sightline distances as you're traveling on the state right away, so.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Tiger, an example of a local, a local job is that is the train station, Bob's identified trees there and those are coming down. It's more of a local job, right?
That's that's Elm Street, yeah, we own Elm Street. So those two trees um that are right there next to the train station, those two large elms. One at the corner of the driveway and one halfway down the sidewalk. We're planning on redoing that sidewalk, uh putting in a new curb. And then redoing the parklet that's there, the nine eleven memorial and uh for us to go in there and redo that sidewalk and redo the curb. for us to go in there and redo that sidewalk and redo the curb. Uh I don't think that the, we're gonna be right on side of the, both sides of the root um structure for tho- those two trees. They're, they're quite large and, you know, one of them is starting to damage the road, the driveway and the sidewalk. And then the other one seems like it's coming straight out of the, straight out of the grass shelf, don't know exactly where their, that root structure is, you know, it's gotta be underneath the roadway, but uh but our feeling is that the moment we come in there, redo that, um, we're gonna have a problem. We're working with the Beautification League, they have a very, very nice planting plan and uh kind of renovation of that whole area. And I think it'll, I, I think when everyone's done, I think, I think it'll be a nice, you know, nice change. No, we had other, we planted other ones on the lower end and we're trying to, there's a festigiate elm that's uh supposed to be um residual, resistant. And we planted.
Two American homes on Elm Street.
Yeah, it's very tough, they, they're uh, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a tough thing, you know. We were, we were, you know, we have a lot of the street, we have a lot of streets named after trees, not a lot of those trees are actually um, you know, maple cherry, I don't think we have any cherries on cherry, you know, we're running out of Elms on Elm, unfortunately. But our tree warden is looking at that to try to see what he can do, we, I mentioned, I talked to him today and he said that we're gonna, we're gonna have to see if we can't come up with if maybe not in that area, but in other areas, Elm Street, come back and replant a couple of Elms on Elm, so we're working towards that. Any other questions? Everybody good? Okay, so uh the Town Hall Annex, um we keep track of this only because as we, as we started off with the Annex, um it was asked at the Board of Finance level, um the costs are all rolled into uh the Buildings Department, but just to kind of give it a look. Uh and we're, we're showing no, um, no change year over year, um, right now it's working well. Uh, Human Services seems to be very happy on the bottom floor. The renter on the top floor said some issues with COVID as far as participation and things like that, but he seems very happy as well. Um, we have a long-term lease with him and uh the leases help offsetting uh the costs themselves, the the rental charges go into a separate account, but we are trying to keep track of uh what it costs us to run the building and what we get in our rentals, we're trying to make that, have that on parity, on par.
How much do you pull in that you could tell us?
Uh, I wanna say it's in the thirties, but I'm, I'd have to get back to you.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. It's a number I don't have in my head at present, Rich, I'm sorry.
It's probably the only one.
Close, yeah, I'm sure you're gonna find another one within the next thirty minutes or so, okay, yeah. Uh, the last is the wastewater treatment facility, uh Jim's budget, one million, three hundred nineteen thousand, up fifty-eight thousand from last year, four point six one percent. And it's, we're just seeing a, an increase in our sludge hauling on and supplies, uh buildings and grounds, supplies building and grounds covers our chemicals. And then we're seeing an increase in sludge hauling, if you can imagine, right, um, year over year. One, our contracts going up slightly, but uh people are staying home more. So uh definitely saw an increase in our septicage uh this past year, year over year. We actually uh, it was a fifty thousand dollar uh change, I should say. And what, what we saw was, we had to pay um we received in fifty thousand dollars additional in septicage, we had to pay twenty-nine thousand dollars out to haul that away. And uh, so we had a twenty-one thousand dollar increase in revenue, just from people sitting at home. So this is where we're at, John, I will tell you that uh we got our new five-year permit. And I know you have that favorite question that you always have, our concerns on nitrogen, uh excuse me, on phosphorus uh and zinc. Are, we are making permit and we, our permit levels will, we will be able to make our permit levels for the next five years. So our, our concern about whether or not we have an upgrade to the plant um has disappeared at present. So we have a very, we, we did a fantastic job with the past five years, we still continue, we're gonna still have to monitor and do some additional testing and things like that, but um, the idea that we might have a uh, a plant upgrade or a forced plant upgrade in the near future seems to be far off on the horizon. And to give you an idea how well the plant's operating, we get credits back every year for nitrogen removal from uh, from the plant, other plants in the, in the state can't, so they actually buy the credits from us. Uh, we're looking at a budgeted amount of forty-eight thousand dollars this year and to date, we received uh just over one point four million dollars for those efforts. And that's strictly on the fact that Jim and his staff runs the plant at a very um uh high rate or an efficient rate. And then our septicage fees that you just mentioned, um, it's a hundred dollars per thousand gallons coming in, uh we estimated two hundred and forty-nine thousand dollar uh revenue from that. And to date, we've uh brought in just over two point eight million dollars since the institution of that fee in May of oh nine. And uh that goes to uh, the majority of that goes into our major maintenance reserve fund at the plant itself. And that funds the majority of our capital, last year, eight hundred thousand dollars of our capital was funded out of that, this year we're looking at three hundred thousand dollars of our capital expenses to be uh out of that as well. Any questions on the wastewater plant? Cause we are right at eight o'clock, I'm like thirty minutes on the dot, so um so we'll go to everybody's favorite uh capital. Our capital request this year is nine point five seven nine million, up one hundred and fifty-three thousand or one point six three percent over last year, uh there's an asterisk next to that, nine point five million because there is a seven and a half million dollar um um marker for the library, last year we had a five million dollar marker for the library, I didn't include it, so it's apples to apples. So we're looking at the same numbers, I took that out, it'll be a bonded item when it comes forward, but uh in order to be apples to apples, I took it out last year and took it out this year, so you wouldn't see these spikes based upon one building. Um, and then I will mention um this one point six three percent. Uh, when we got done with the Board of Finance, there were two items in the BOE budget, uh one for CH, an additional CHP unit at Saks. And another for two boilers at Saks, the Board of Finance removed it from the Board of Ed budget. Uh, it was a seven hundred thousand dollars and change of numbers that came to us. And that drove our numbers from a negative six percent capital year over year to a positive one point six three percent. So prior to that change, prior to the Board of Ed, uh we were in the negative year over year for our capital request. I'll bring you through administration and engineering, uh we're at five point six eight million, down slightly from five point seven from last year, two point four of that is for our payment management program, there's an asterisk next to that because four hundred and thirty-eight thousand of that two point four million comes from the state. Uh, it's part of our LOSA grant and our TAR funds, Town Aid Road Funds that are given to us by the state. The uh, we have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for our payment preservation, uh line item, that's for our crack ceiling, uh localized repairs, uh things of that nature. I'll give you the one look, um, our one, not our one success, but one large success this year, this is Fieldcrest Drive. If you're standing at Farm Road, if you're back to Farm Road, looking down the lower end of Fieldcrest Drive, if you look to the left, that's actually the gas line trench, if you call it that, and to the right, underneath the uh postal truck heading out of the picture, that was an aquarium water main that they put into Fieldcrest. Now, Fieldcrest was slated for us to do uh in twenty eighteen, that's when Eversource came in and did their work. And then in twenty nineteen, the water line came in and um the moratorium was going to end for Eversource this year, twenty twenty-one. Uh, we had a citizen activist come forward, Rita Patino, she got a petition and talked to every single resident on both streets, Fieldcrest and Village. And we made sure that everyone who wanted the gas hookup got hooked up, Eversource was uh nice enough to do that, and in September we came in. And we were able to then, um, since everyone was done, repave the road. Uh, and then redo the sidewalks on either side. So now you're looking at, you look at the juxtaposition one to the other, so it's a completely new development or completely new neighborhood with old trees. Um, so it's a, I think that that was a win-win overall, we're trying to do the exact same technique on other roads in town whereby we get out ahead of Eversource and have them um take care of the services that they need to do so that we can come back in and pave in a more timely manner, so we don't have to uh wait as long. So um, I think there's one more here. Rich, these are a couple of questions that you asked, so we'll uh, while we're on the pavement side, we'll do that. Um, to give you an idea of where our PCI is now, that's the graph on the bottom, our PCI is just over an eighty-four. Um, we are getting close to that eighty-five mark um that we had talked about. And we are nearing the end of the twenty-year life cycle or the twenty-year cycle of what we've been doing, so we are right on time as far as uh time, money and uh and our PCI itself, even given the fact that Eversource has come in and uh taking care of some of our roads. We are a couple of years ahead, I would say we are two years ahead of schedule, it was a twenty-year turnaround, I think we're, we'll be finished with everybody at the year eighteen. Um, and then at that point in time, we'll top out the eighty-five and then we can see exactly how we're gonna plan out the next uh twenty years or five, ten years after that. Um, Rich, you had the question as to whether or not we could jump everything forward, you know, this one, I know everyone wants to ask about, you know, can you move stuff forward? If you look at the top graph, um, you can see that there's this deterioration curve, this black is the deterioration curve, right? That's the pavement deterioration curve, and you wanna catch it five years out, you wanna crack seal, ten years out, you wanna mill and pay, uh excuse me, do a thin overlay. And then be doing interim treatment five years out again on crack seal, and then at that point in time, twenty years out, we'll come back and mill and pave. So we stay completely in the upper end of the graph as far as whether it's a very good road or an excellent road. The only problem if we decided to then expend more money early and bring them forward is we would just be shortening the graph. And we wouldn't be getting the entire play out of it, so we would be bringing this line back here, right? And then at that point in time, we're gonna pay for it twenty years out, right? So I just shortened out and I took the lifespan back out again, so in that regard, you know, I love the idea. But there are other areas where we could possibly do that, say sidewalks and parking lots where we're necessarily a little bit behind on um um doing the repairs, so to speak. There was, you know, we just started our sidewalk management program, we've been at it for about three, four years now and uh parking lots, we'll get to in a moment and I'll, I'll show you where we are. But uh, as far as pavement, we wouldn't, we wouldn't happen.
Hey Tiger?
Yes.
You must be doing something right because my friends who are paving contractors hate you.
That's a good thing, I guess, I guess that's a good thing, I'll take that, you know, the um I, I, I do have to say, we, we went out to bid for the Nature Center parking lot this year, we got eight bids back on everywhere from Yonkers, New York to Upstate Connecticut and around. And uh out of the eight, we uh, we, we typically contract with three, you know, we have a, we have three bidders that always bid our work. FGB Grasso and Dearing, and interestingly enough, when we got done with the three, with the eight bids and analyzed them and ranked them, Grasso was the lowest, Dearing was second, FGB was third, and then there was a drop-off all the way through and an increase in cost. So the people that we've been using for the past ten, fifteen, twenty years uh in a test case, you know, proved that they were actually the low bidder or the better bidder um at that time. So that was nice, that was actually nice to see.
While we're on the subject here, can, can we talk about, I know, I'm your biggest fan and I am so positive about all this, but I've heard more complaints this year about roads in bad conditions and I, I keep telling people to have patience, but uh roads like Main Street and some of the roads closer to town, the roads out of town seem like they're in great shape, but the roads in town are really tough.
That's this next, that's the next slide.
It makes me cry because I, I was, I've been on this thing long enough that we had Main Street looking like Fieldcrest just a few years ago, and now it looks like, it looks like something out of a war movie, it's unbelievable.
I, I, I don't disagree, Steve, the uh Main Street was my baby, right, cause you know, that was a long battle, got to put sidewalks in, it's absolutely beautiful and then um, unfortunately, Eversource came in and then Aquarian came in, uh and Aquarian's uh starting again uh Monday, Tuesday of next week, and they're gonna continue from Oak Street up to Church, bang a left on the church, go to South Avenue. And then go down to Cherry and South, uh come down Cherry to Main and then Main Street all the way up to Locust Avenue. So they're putting in, they're continuing that water main that they started and they'll finish at the firehouse at the end of the year. Um, Eversource will be at the top end of Main Street from East Avenue to Locust in the next couple of weeks, once they get a permit from the state. So you're gonna see that, but then in the end, that stretch will be repaved completely curb to curb, so that downtown stretch that is not ours, one twenty-four, from basically Cherry through town will be paid, be paved curb to curb, which is great. This, this uh map that you see, everything in green is what Eversource did in twenty eighteen. So those roads that you're talking about, this was, we were done in the downtown. We were, we had literally been done except for Fieldcrest and Village and Brinkerhoff, Mortimer and Lockwood, we were in essence done in this entire area. Um, and then Eversource came in and, and in one year, this is what they did to our network, right? They touched every single road in our network. Uh, in the most heavily populated area, right, most heavily used, um. We are at the end of that um moratorium, they had eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and in twenty-one were slated to repave. The unfortunate thing is COVID came in in twenty twenty and um they put their entire sales force on furlough. And they, in essence, did no sales for the entire year. So we have a number of residents that are out there on these roads that haven't gotten services yet. And my opinion, the whole reason why we did this is to be able to get services to our residents, I have to afford them the opportunity to do that. So I'm asking Eversource to go out with one more blanketed approach um and attack all the areas where they, where they haven't reached what they consider to be saturation level. Um, the areas that I've asked them to focus on first are Mortimer, Brinkerhoff and Lockwood, those are my top three. Um, I actually wanted to have those up to bid now, but I'm giving them an additional thirty days. And anyone on that street, I'm asking them to hurry to side and then hook up uh or not. And then we'll come in and we'll do exactly what we did at Fieldcrest and Village, which is uh complete reconstruction of the road and new sidewalks in the area. Um, and then the other two roads that I'm asking for, Lower Main Street, up to where Aquarian is working on now, so Farm Road to Oak. And then Gower Road from end to end, um, cause Gower, you know, goes right past South School, it's heavily traveled and it's in bad shape. The rest of them will continue to work throughout the year and then hopefully um come through with a uh plan. Um, at the end, then I can, the moment that they're, Eversource says they've re-saturation is the moment we're gonna try to look to pave. So, you know, in a perfect world, without COVID, we'd be repaving all these this year. Now with COVID, I, I have to in good conscience give somebody the opportunity, since they missed an entire year uh of availability so to speak, so if you ask people to be patient just a little bit longer, we're trying to be as patient as possible as well. No one's more frustrated than we are.
Patience will be key here for sure.
Yes, yeah, no, no one's more frustrated than, than Mo's and I, I can tell you that much and.
Tiger, can you, can you remind us of the rule of who pays for which repaving here, whether it's your repaving program or whether it's Eversource?
Sure, the uh, we, we had an agreement in the beginning, if we had not done the road prior, um, then we were responsible, so Fieldcrest and Village, right, we hadn't, the, the road was in bad shape, we were about to do it. I'm not gonna ask the, the Eversource to come in and repave it when we, that was our responsibility, same thing with Mortimer, Brinkerhoff and Lockwood. Uh, then we had a certain number of roads that were microed and then a certain number of roads that hadn't paved. Um, everything had been done basically in the past ten years, so anything in the past ten years, they would be responsible to come back for. The only modification that we're looking to do is that the micro roads, we're looking for them to come in and mill and pave the uh, the trench and the services. So that in essence, we'll get a nice entire pavement back, the trenches are in pretty bad shape, so for us to micro over that, it won't work. So we're saying, you're gonna have to increase your game a little bit on the micro roads and on the roads that you were going to do curb to curb that had been paved. We're gonna say do the trench and do all the services again, very similar to what the state's doing, but we'll get our entire road network back.
And when, when, when they do this, i- i- are, do they just pay you to have you manage it or do they manage it or?
No, they, they uh, they'll write us a check based upon what the bid comes in at, so we'll manage it, it'll be a town contract. Um, Aquarian works slightly different, um, Aquarian, our agreement with Aquarian um, was that or is that uh the majority of our roads that hadn't been paved, they would pay fifty percent. So we would bid and then we would tell them exactly how much it was and they would write a check for fifty percent of the mill and pave um items and the uh, the mill and pave. The mill and the pave, um, the town would take over line striping, driveways, curbs, things like that, because that's out of their control and a lot of it has to do with the residential requests, but they would pay fifty percent of uh, of the cost. And then we've had times where Aquarian came in and put in a new line on Weed Street. And we made that, and we hack me, and we. Aquarian came in and put in a new line on Weed Street and we made that and we hack me and we made them pay for the entire road at that point in time. So they'll write us a check and then we um manage the contract. Sure.
So Tiger, just in summary, all of all of these roads highlighted in green should be repaved in some capacity over the next within the next, you know, what timeframe?
It's this year, next year. I I'm trying to give them, I'm trying to give them the opportunity. If I gave them the whole year to, you know, because they lost twenty twenty, in essence, we'd be paving them early twenty twenty-two. I'm asking for them to kind of highlight certain areas, focus on certain areas and anything that they've reached saturation on where everyone's either said yay or nay, then we'll come in and pave those. So they're working on that. They have, they have a sales force coming out now and and uh trying to push through that understanding our frustration, which is quite high.
I just keep wondering about, I I keep wondering about the people that just moved to town from different places and and judging us by uh by our roads, we wouldn't score very well, at least in the downtown area.
In the downtown area, no, but if you look, like you said, Steve, if you get outside of it, you know, our PCI is an average, right? So it's it's an eighty-four. So you can imagine the outside roads are much, much better than the inside at present.
It's it's beautiful driving on the outside of town. It's, you've done a great job, but it's just with EverSource, you know, and and Water Company literally digging up every road in this area. It just seems like we're constantly under uh under the gun. And if you remember, we had did a townwide survey just a few years ago that said number one, education, number two, safety, number three, out of all the items we 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 asked about, number three was roads. The road, the condition of the roads are so important. It's it's uh people really value that, so.
We don't disagree. I, you know, if if they weren't here, we'd pretty much be done. You know, that PCI would be above an eighty-five and we'd be having a different discussion at present, but we're not, unfortunately. We're on the cusp. Any other questions on where we sit with EverSource? All right, the uh the next thing that we that we spoke about was uh I have a three hundred thousand dollars on the line um in this year's budget for parking lots. This uh map on the right-hand side is a draft form of a map that we're putting together, highlighting all of the parking lots in town so that you can exactly see it graphically. We actually have sixty-two separate parking lots in town at thirty-four separate locations. So you can imagine how many we have and and the need to then continue. So when while you might consider that all you're looking at are, let's say, the commuter lots or, you know, the downtown lots. You have to remember that Waveney itself has probably uh five, six, seven separate. You've got a couple at Lapham. You got the pool, you've got two with the pool, right? You've got all around Waveney House, around the powerhouse, Carriage Barn, things of that nature. Then you go to other locations um to take into account. So we're work, we're, this was a draft that we received this morning that we had asked for from our GIS consultant. We'll tweak it a little bit and then we'll send that around to everybody, but uh we have three hundred thousand dollars in our line item this year. I just mentioned that we did the nature center. Uh we are doing the nature center right now. Contractors there. It'll be fantastic when it's done. And then we're looking to do hopefully Park Street, the Playhouse Lot, EverSource is going to be bringing in a gas line through the backside of Park Street to feed Town Hall, uh the Town Hall Annex. And possibly the Playhouse through there. The moment that they get done there, then we'll come back in and repave those two lots and then we'll work to go elsewhere. Any questions on parking lots themselves? This is one area, Rich, where, you know, if we if we put more in, A, we could manage it and B, we could start to get a jump on it, right? Because uh at the rate that we're at, um we're at the bare minimum of what we need to do in order to to stay current.
Tiger, I have a question regarding the the library and center school lot. Is that included in the budget you're presenting?
What? The at present, we don't have any, at present, we don't have any plans for center school lot.
Okay.
If the the, at present, the MOU is that the library will come in um to their construction, utilize a portion of the lot. At the end of the time, we'll come, a year after construction, we'll come in with a consultant. Our consultant will do a traffic study and then based upon that traffic and parking study, if it's determined that the library that we need parking at the center school lot, then the then the library will pay the town to manage the project and hire the contractor to uh make up the difference in the parking.
Okay.
Answer your question?
Yep, thank you.
No, you're welcome.
This parking lot tabulation is a new slide.
It's a new slide, John. This, we just got the map this morning. I mean, literally, she's, she's, the ink is barely dry.
And so what you're suggesting is that you, that in the future, this is the beginning of maybe a process where you start thinking about this the way you think of your mill and.
I've already thought about it. Well, that's why we've been trying to fund it at three hundred thousand dollars a year. Yes. So this is, this just tabulates out all the lots so that it gives you an idea of exactly how many we have, right? Because it's very hard when we say, oh, well, there's thirty-four locations and sixty-two separate lots, until you actually see it on paper, right? And every single one of these yellow dots, that's a lot, right? So and then, you know, if I if I if I brought in just an inset of just the downtown, you know, you you look at at the train station, we have an upper and lower at the lumberyard lot. We have the north lot at the train station, south lot, Pine Street Lot, Richmond Hill, Morse Court, AT&T Lot, Locust, Firehouse, three lots at the Town Hall, Vine Cottage. That's, that's just right there. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, thirteen, and that's our little inset. So, you know, it gives you a little bit of a better idea of exactly how much we have and how much we have to manage.
Tiger, if you were to, if you were to estimate to treat the parking lots the same way you're treating the the roads and having brought them up to speed, up to speed at about two and a half million dollars a year for twenty years, what would that number be for the parking lots, just in?
The the numbers, the number is about five hundred, three hundred to five hundred. I I brought it down to three hundred and that was basically bare bones to try to stay current. The five hundred would then get us back up, yeah.
Start to make some progress.
Start to make some progress, right? Three hundred, we're we're holding, but it's not a great hold. We can't do, we can't do the same amount of techniques that we do on our roads that we can, that on our parking lots that we can do on our roads. There are certain things that certain techniques due to the turning movements and uh people turning in and out parking that tends to tear the mat. Um so some of the overlays, some of the thin overlays, some of the cracked ceiling, um we can't necessarily do in a parking lot. That reduces um our quiver, so to speak, of uh available techniques, right? On the on the roads, we we have a seven, eight techniques that we can utilize on parking lots. They're a little bit less. So it hurts us a little bit. So yeah, in order to try to stay out of that lower range of the reclaim, there's a little bit less room for us to play with and and um costs are a little bit greater.
If if we've been spending on the, on the order of three hundred thousand dollars a year for the past five or six or seven years.
We're behind. Well, I I think that the the program itself is only about three years old. Four years old at present, at three hundred thousand dollars. But inside there, you know, we have the Locust Lot. It right now is slated at five hundred grand, right? So I have that set aside, that money set aside for Locust, five hundred set aside, but it'll probably be more, more in the range of six, seven.
That's a mess.
You're welcome. The uh and then the last was you had a question on sidewalks and where we stood uh as far as um new sidewalks and then existing. So this is a plan of the, the plan of conservation development from twenty fourteen, um which shows the blue ring is um quarter mile radius outside of the downtown area, outside the train station, and the green ring is a half mile out. We uh the the two thousand and three P O C D had a very, very similar look, only that's um had basically a, you you would envision everything, everything that I showed you on the EverSource map, that was the two two thousand and three, that was the focus for sidewalks in the two thousand and three. Um it just didn't play well. Um Ray did a really nice job trying to meld the two together, but it just didn't play well on the screen when I put it up. But the overall thought on this is that all those red dashes, those are all newly proposed sidewalks in the P O C D from twenty fourteen. So and then the yellow markers, the yellow stars and the green stars, green stars are what we've done. So the upper right-hand corner here, this is the sidewalk from Elm Street to Irwin Park, and then here's the green link, right? So we've done this stretch here. And then we just, we did this stretch here, Fieldcrest and Village, we took care of that. And then in play for us, as far as what I'll consider to be in play, is we uh, right now, we have a lotsip grant proposed for this entire stretch of Park Street to here, okay? Um and then we have a lotsip grant proposed from here to Marshall Ridge. Uh it's one point six million dollars combined, uh and we're hoping we made it through the first large hurdle. It took us two years to get through, but uh we got approval from the Western Council of Governments, um and now our our plan is in the final approval stage with DOT.
So that'll go right, that'll go right up the hill there?
That'll go right up the hill to Marshall Ridge, right? On the Meat Park side, so from the Meat Park entrance. And then we have, excuse me, we have under design right now, it's being surveyed, Pine Street. Due to the proximity of all the businesses and the difficulty with the curb cuts, we have, we have that being surveyed and engineered now. Maria is working on a plan from Heritage Hill all the way up to Parade Hill. That's an existing walk with a portion of an extension right here uh at the end. And uh since it's it's existing, she's working with the state DOT right now. It's been a year-long process for we're hoping for uh to come up, go out to bid this year for that work. We have River Street being reconstructed and a sidewalk being placed there. And we have this stretch from Park Street to Bristow. We uh received a proposal the other day, and that'll go to the Board of Selectment for approval this coming week. And then we have a stretch here on Gower Road from Southwood to South School, where there is actually no sidewalk. It actually comes onto the school property uh and then stops at South School. So any student that needs to walk to Saks or the high school can't do it. So the thought is to then do this piece right here. So those are all the pieces that we have um in play. And then lastly, we had, this was designed, this is at the end of the View sidewalk to Maple Street. We've had it designed. We've been waiting for one pole to be moved by Frontier for well over two years. Uh Joe Zagorinsky, my senior engineer, has been sending an email once a week to Frontier asking. And the last email he sent just said, please, and three days later, they said, yes, we're coming out. We got a call before he did yesterday that they're coming. Two-year-long process from from the view. So I have to thank Joe for that. Little levity might have gone a long way, right? So the uh, but that gives you an idea. So if I tabulate all those out, right? This is the tabulation of everything that's been asked and proposed and it's just under four million dollars of uh of requests for new sidewalks, um in keeping with the plan of conservation development. Interestingly enough, the request that we got from the residents mirrored what was being requested, what was being sought by the by the plan of metrics when they did uh the P O C D.
And and how much of this do you have, how much of this do you have in the in the five-year plan?
I have, uh every year I've been asking and every year I haven't received. This year I have five hundred thousand dollars in sidewalk line. It was three hundred for existing walks, two hundred thousand dollars for new. The thought being that if we get the lotsip grant at one point six million, um that's going to take a good chunk of some of this away. And then we can then start to look uh further, but I I would like to get um if I can, I'd like to get the stretch on Gower Road done next to South School. And then um possibly the extension on Park Street to Bristow, just to try to complete that little portion of the green link. And then we can.
Do you have the capacity to to move some of this forward if you if you have the money?
Yes. Yeah, we do have the.
Does this get coordinated with redoing some of the roads?
It's an excellent question, yes. So we try to do it commensurate. So when we did Fieldcrest, we paid for, we paid for that out of the road bond, the sidewalks came out of the road bond. But yes, we try to try to sister the two together. The unfortunate thing is right now I've got a, I've got a problem on Richmond Hill and I'm going to have to repave Richmond Hill before we get the sidewalk grant. Unfortunately, we were trying to have them go on a parallel path and we're not going to be able to do that there, but where where possible, yes, Pine Street will come in and redo the road and the sidewalks all in one shot.
And who who has the responsibility to keep the sidewalks clean?
Great question. That's a, because this this is going to go to Steve in a, in about a month. The, at present, the uh charter calls for uh the town is responsible for the nineteen miles of residential sidewalks in town and the one mile of businesses is responsible, is the responsibility of business owners. Used to be flipped. We would like to see it go back, but in essence, the town will take care of the major routes, uh the town will take care of our properties and the major routes to and from school that we already do. And then we would like to see the residents take care of their frontage and the businesses take care of theirs.
Will you be sending out a letter so everybody's clear on the responsibility?
Well, that's that's an ordinance change, so that's going to have to come to Steve and and then, yeah, then it'll go through an entire process at that point in time.
Okay.
You're one of, I think, only two municipalities that actually um the responsibility is the is the is the town and not the uh not the adjacent property owner. Last time I looked, I think we were one of two. Um so it's and it's, we cannot do nineteen miles of sidewalk. It's just not possible. So John and his crew get through with the the ones that we can do our tier, what we call our tier one. Sometimes that they they require to be redone as far as icing and things of that nature, and then he possibly gets into tier two, some of them, some of the more heavily traveled ones, but it's a, there's, it's not possible. It's possible, but it's about three million dollars a year for an additional crew to be hired to go do that with the amount of snow that we get. And I don't think that that's I don't think that's the best approach it.
And Tiger, it's Penny. Can you refresh my memory on the um uh piece in front of St. Mark's going up Owen Oak?
Oh, that was what I was mentioning prior, Penny, was that uh that's under design right now, um and it's been a year-long design with a year-long process with Maria and the state. And um, you know, some of that had to do with COVID, whereby, you know, it's very difficult coordinate back and forth, but uh we're hoping, if I can reduce her workload a little bit, she can get back on this, then we're hoping that this year it will be done. I have monies for it um from last year's budget and we'll see that done. So that'll go from a new sidewalk from Heritage Hill up past the churches to Parade Hill.
Okay, great. It it's not just, you know, the in and the residents there who walk that area, but I I see a lot of people on Owen Oak walking now, so.
Yeah, and that'll help complete the green link.
Yes.
So uh, yeah, Rich, in answer to your question, we have, we have twenty miles of sidewalk. It's a and they last for twenty years and it's about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per mile of walk. So that's why we had three hundred thousand in there because it's one hundred and fifty, then fifty thousand dollars of miscellaneous repairs specifically in the downtown area with the brick sidewalks and things of that nature. Maybe some upgrades here and there. That's that's where that three hundred thousand dollar number came from. Maintain the twenty miles that we have. And and anything above that would take into account any new installation that that um that we wanted to bring forward. That's why I rounded it up to five hundred this year, just to have this discussion. I was glad you actually brought that up in your email. So that I could show you what the P O C D showed and then what this, what that meant, you know?
Yeah, this is, this is terrific. This is terrific because if you lay it against the P O C D, we should be done by twenty twenty-four, right? Because it was twenty fourteen, wasn't it, when the P O C D put? And that would get, that would give us if if this is four million bucks and we did five hundred thousand years, that's eight, that's eight years, that would be four years late, but it would, it would certainly be a help. And if you did, if you did a million, a million bucks a year, you'd get there.
Yes, so.
How many more miles does this put on it, Tiger, when you, when you do the four million?
I I don't have that on this sheet. I'll get you that. I have that. I just don't have that on this sheet. I don't have, that's, there you go. There's your second number. Can't ask me anymore.
Okay, you got it.
Sorry.
Tiger, could you actually handle a million dollars a year in terms?
I was saying, it was a little lofty. Sidewalks are very, very hands-on. Especially, and we like to be hands-on with that, right? Because it's it's going in front of every single resident, right? So there's a lot to be lot to be said there. You know, it's a change for someone's front yard, irrigation problems, drainage problems, driveway problems, things of that nature. I, the million would be a stretch, to be honest. We could certainly, we can handle the five hundred and then uh the 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 two hundred or the additional two hundred to five hundred. We probably could do a little bit better than that, probably to seven fifty million. I I I think it's going to get a little bit tight. Uh I'd rather not do that. Uh I'd rather not do that.
Thanks.
You're welcome. So then if we look at the rest of uh the budget itself, we kind of covered the big ones. Ponus Ridge construction is on here. Uh that's the Ponus Ridge Bridge. It's currently being designed right now. Uh the state is handling that entire design with um input from the town. So the town amenities that we like to see in certain additions that we like to see as far as stone facing Merritt Parkway guide rail, the wood guide rail, things of that nature. They're taking that into consideration under their design. And then they came through with three options. We chose the option that we liked. They agreed with that and um they're going forward with the design. And in a year's time, um we'll be going out to construction. It's thought to be approximately two hundred thousand dollars. There's an asterisk next to that. Excuse me, two million dollars. There's an asterisk next to that because it's an eighty twenty split. So eighty percent is paid by the state, actually paid by the federal government through the state and twenty percent is paid by the town. We have to show you the entire project amount so that the project can be approved in that fashion. But as I said, the design, two hundred fifty thousand dollars of that is being paid directly by the state at present uh with no, with no input from the, with no uh monetary input from the town. And then we have fifty thousand dollars for drainage improvements, guide rail, signage replacement twenty five. We are continuing our camera and security upgrade initiative, fifty thousand dollars. This is for most of our town buildings. We have a milestone system now um for our cameras in town whereby if uh the user can see it on his, on a tablet, on a phone, on a on a computer screen, and then we can then dial in exactly who needs to see what administrative rights to see what. So some of the parking lots in town, when when they get um cameras on them for for security, our highway department and park staff can utilize that to see whether or not they need to be cleaned and whether what we have for snow and ice and things of that nature. So that this fifty thousand dollars is pretty much taking care of our town buildings uh to take care of our liability and security issues there. And then we'll work with the police department uh on some of the outlying areas in town that they have concerns with. Uh and then we have twenty five thousand dollars for what we're calling an energy savings initiative master plan. And that's basically to hire a consultant to come in and take a look at all of our buildings. Look at them holistically. Where have we missed on say LED upgrades? We've done a a large amount of LED upgrades throughout almost every single one of our buildings. Bill's done a very nice job working with uh EverSource on on their initiatives there. But then looking at solar installations, C H P, things of that nature, certain ways to uh save some additional monies. And then look at it holistically and package it together for a larger larger R F P or bid so that uh we can get a better bang for our buck.
How long will that take to do, Tiger?
Excuse me?
How long will that take to do this?
That's that's uh six months or more or so. Take a look at that. And then go forward. You know, we 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 have, we have ideas as to where we'd like to proceed right now as far as some of the roofs that are coming available for us. The playhouse roof, we're looking to redo now. So we'll look to put solar on that. We have a a consultant coming out to make sure that we can handle the load of the additional uh solar panels and doneage that goes along with it. And then we have other, other ones that we are looking at that might be coming close to their their end of life. And what do we do at that point? Do we bring them offline early? Do we put solar on first, take the solar off, those kind of things? So we're looking at several, at least four separate roofs right now for solar. And we'll we'll have a, we'll have more guidance in the direction probably in the next month or so. So I answer your question. Okay, anything else on admin engineering? I know that was a big chunk, so I'm a little bit over. Town buildings. Again, the request is nine point three seven, but if we take seven and a half million off of that for the police department, we're at one eight seven. And it's up from one three seven seven, but uh the larger chunk of that is seven hundred and forty thousand dollars came over from the B O E, four hundred thousand dollars for Saks C H P and three hundred and forty thousand dollars for boiler oil replacements at Saks. We have the Irwin Barn Roof Replacement at two twenty one. We have an additional uh roof or shed roof at the Parks Garage. This is off the backside of the Parks Garage. We have a large number of equipment that sits out twenty four seven, three sixty five. And our feeling is we'd like to put a shed roof off the back of the entire structure off the back of the Parks Garage. And then uh and then be able to put a lot of our uh equipment undercover. We have a hundred and seventy thousand dollars for heating system at the EMS building. This might be rolled into the larger police department work, but right now the 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 building is fed from the police department at the point when we sever the police department and start working on that. Or what, you know, based upon the direction we receive from the consultants and the building committee, the EMS building will still need a heating system. And then we have a hundred and twenty three thousand dollars for the A D L, A D A upgrades at the Carriage Barn. We went out to bid because we're a little bit higher than anticipated and we need some additional funds for that. And then we have about thirteen separate areas of concern. There are two lines in here that have uh read through them. So um the first one, the potting shed, we originally came in at a hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars to redo the roof and the outside shell um and get it ready for a bathroom installation. Board of Finance asked us to take a step back, take a look at it holistically. And the thought is that um we would like to hire an engineer, architect, consultant to come in, give us plans for the complete renovation of the building itself and the institution of uh handicapped bathrooms and heating system so it could be used utilized year round. The thought that that'll be somewhere around the order of two hundred and thirty five, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we asked for the the consultant fees first at forty thousand dollars and then we'll come back. There's a, if you see, there's another line next year for the actual construction on the potting shed. And then at the Town Hall Annex, we had a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in for a generator uh in essence to string a line between the Town Hall and the Town Hall Annex so that it would be powered. Uh it's one of our um emergency services buildings. Since it houses uh human services and they they take care of our vulnerable population. So we could then run a line from the, from the Town Hall over to the Annex and feed the Annex there. The Board of Finance asked us to take a a couple of different looks at it. This was to just power up the Annex. This was the cheapest. We did look at a standalone generator outside the Annex. One, there was some sighting problems with it as far as where we would locate it. Two was more money than what was proposed. But then we came back with the idea that years passed, we had asked for for several years in a row, we had asked for a standalone generator on a trailer that would be a multi hookup one whereby if the generator, the police department goes down, we would have to then hire somebody to come in and give us a generator similar to what we did at the Y M C A during Sandy. That costs ninety thousand dollars just to have that there hooked up and then rented for the time being. For two hundred and fifteen, we can buy one generator. And then it can take care of the hookup. If the police department fails, we can go to the police department. If the fire department fails, go there. If uh we need to, the wastewater plant has its own, we wouldn't be able to do that. Highway feeds off the wastewater, but we might be able to feed the highways separately. We could feed other buildings with this generator. And in the interim, if it wasn't necessary for one of those, it could sit outside Town Hall Annex and feed the Town Hall Annex during an emergency. So the thought was it would be a multi-use facility. So instead of spending a hundred and twenty for one building, we said we'd like to come back, give us time to study it, spec it out correctly, and then come back. And we have two hundred and fifteen slated for next year for that. And that's why you see that that line drawn through there.
Tiger, where would that sit at the Town Hall Annex? Would you have a pad? It's not gonna take up?
No, it's it's, it would be on a trailer. So it would sit in a parking space.
So we are gonna give up a parking space, though. Would that be on the Town Hall side or on the?
No, it'd be on the upper, it would probably be on the upper tier. Where that, we're thinking where the four spaces are at present. And it would only be for emergencies. We wouldn't have to give it up. We'd only have it up for emergencies. At that point in time, we would then move it to uh store it elsewhere.
Under the new roof at the Parks Garage?
I'm sorry.
Under the new roof at the Parks Garage?
Right, excellent comment. Yeah, that was one location that could go. There's, there's others that we have that that are, that would house it just as well.
Where's the Parks Garage?
The Saks Garage. It's right.
Oh, that. Okay, got it.
You're welcome.
Tiger, on the, on the potting shed, I know that, I know that the uh the folks that uh the theater there at Waveney, they're talking about redoing the uh the whole entry hall, et cetera, and bathrooms in there.
Right.
Does, does this fit with that at all?
It's a good question. Um so we we've met with Joel Reynolds from the Powerhouse uh because we have to redo the bathrooms inside there. And now we're partnering with them on a larger, they want to expand their lobby.
Right.
And the footprint out. And the thought being is that we could then um partner with them and possibly hire the same architect, um but most definitely get the same landscape architect to look at while the buildings might might be done separately based upon what their needs are and what our needs are. But the the area itself would be looked at holistically by by someone to then tie in everything together. The conservancy is doing a nice job on a master plan there. We're trying to work with the Conservancy, the Powerhouse and the town together to to uh to come forward with that, with a more cohesive design.
Terrific.
But you're, you're talking about landscape design. You're not you're not thinking that the architectural uh would be necessarily coordinated?
No, we are thinking that the architectural might be coordinated. Yes. We have, we have someone that we we plan to utilize for the potting shed. And the the Powerhouses is is thinking that that they might want to, might want to join and have. And then that that firm would be looking at both at the exact same time. And there might be synergies there as far as, you know, the shared patio and shared walkways and things like that. And then at that point in time, we we'd uh bring in the Conservancy's uh landscape architect to take a look at it from that aspect as well. We're, we're trying to develop the synergies all the way through basically for one large cohesive project. Separate costs, separate bids, but one large cohesive project.
And and the, the bathrooms inside the Powerhouse, that was on a, a faster track, but uh now that'll, the calendar will pretty much match with the potting shed or?
The calendar will match the work at the Powerhouse itself. Because it's, there's no neat, there's no sense for us to go in and redo the bathrooms there and then come back out for the Powerhouse to do their work. So we're thinking that we'll partner our monies with theirs for that work for the Powerhouse work. We'll get the bathrooms that we need and then they'll get what they want uh in the front. And and you know, we're limited by what budget we've already, um we already have.
The potting shed could be on a, a different project plan.
Budget, yes, could be a different timeline and it most likely will. Got a different timeline. Any other questions on town buildings? The highway department, it's a six hundred and five thousand dollar request up from last year's three eighty three. We uh, we have a two-wheel drive dump sander. Uh it's steel prices are going up. Last year's was two hundred thousand dollars. We had in the budget, the bids came actually back in at two sixteen. We're able to find monies in our other budgets for that change. Uh this will replace it two thousand and three. This is our last truck that has just a dedicated sander body, meaning that uh it can only be utilized for winter operations. Every other body that we have is considered what's called an all season body whereby the uh the spinner is integrated into the body, but necessarily is out of the way. So you won't see it. And it doesn't affect the operation. So then the the truck itself can be used three hundred and sixty five days a year for other, other projects and other work. So we're happy to have this one leave. She's but uh served us well, but eighteen years old. We try to replace one every fifteen years. We have thirteen in the fleet. And then we have a couple of years whereby we have a, say, a loader replacement where we balance out the capital at that regard. We have a sweeper replacement. We have two sweepers. Sweepers last seven to ten years. We have two that are nearing the end of their useful life. Um both of you nearing it. And we're, we will determine which one we should get rid of based upon um studies of our maintenance costs on each one, but the maintenance costs are rising for each. We have a hundred thousand dollars in the budget for a processing screener. This is a materials processing screener. This is for the materials that come into the highway department. We can then put it through the screener. The asphalt is dumped out one side, rock is dumped out another, and then usable fill is dumped out from another side. So we can make our own topsoil and then either sell off the rock or trade the rock and give away the the asphalt since it costs money to uh process. At that point, the uh, we have been um partnering with uh and basically renting a processing screener. The one that we're renting is um past its useful life and is being retired. And we're looking at having to uh purchase our own. So that's that. We have twenty thousand dollars for loader plow replacement, twenty five thousand dollars for our equipment refurbishing. And then this will answer the question at the transfer station as far as what we have for, we have, it's, it's a I I labeled it here as a feasibility study. It's not a feasibility study. It's basically a uh conceptual plan. We'd like to hire a consultant to come in, take a look at our entire facility and help us place a salt barn. It got cut out of the budget back in nineteen ninety eight, two thousand, when the highway department was moved over from the Avalon site. We had a salt dome at that time. And we've been utilizing the old uh tipping floor for the second incinerator um since that time. You can't dump salt inside it. It's uh, the salt is starting to eat away at the concrete inside the uh incinerator building itself. And um it's time for us to try to find a, a home for a salt barn on our site. We'll look at the site holistically. I think, Rich, this will answer some of the questions as far as you, we have limited areas that we can work on since uh the area is capped. Um and we have a, we have a liner across most of it. In the area where we have, we have a nineteen fifties era incinerator and nineteen seventies era incinerator there. The animal control is in one uh and then our transfer station offices and the salt area in another. So we'd like to take a look at the entire area. Understand the the different things that we have going on there and the different needs that we have. One is for a salt barn, one is for an animal control shelter. Another is for a swap shop. And then some other areas for increased recycling capabilities, either paint mattresses, increase electronics. A lot of those need to be undercover themselves. So we'd like to take a look at the area holistically and then come forward with a plan. So that's this fifty thousand dollars. So while it's, I labeled it a feasibility study, it's, it's, it's not, it's really a conceptual plan as to where we could place one and what that would do for us. Any other questions on that? Sorry, Steve.
That's, that's smart to do a, do an overall feasibility study because we do have a lot of things in play over there, you know, and in the recent, you know, talk about the swap shop and and all of the things that, especially the animal shelter, there's so many things going on over there. You should look at all of them and figure out where we're going. So you know, it's a great idea to do a study. And it's something we should be spending some time on in the next year and really figure it out.
That's, that's the plan is to try to then place it because so, you know, yeah, we have, like I said, we have limited space. We got a lot of operations going on in one area, one controlled small area. So um I'd just like to take a step back, take a look and see what, what we need to do and where we need to go forward.
Hopefully let us knock down the incinerator.
What was that?
Hope we get the chance to knock down the old incinerator.
Uh I would like to have that chance too. We'll, but we'll see. You know, well, that's, that's part of the, that's part of the thought. Let's take a look at that as well. That area is the area, the only area left for us to to work on. So it it might entail that, but we'll have to see exactly what that.
You need the space and everybody else needs that space.
Yes.
Is there any limitation with the, there's water around that area, isn't there? Like with the salt and getting into water? Side of the capped landfill. Is there like a stream back there?
There is. The Five Mile River runs through the back at the bottom by the wastewater plant. The landfill itself, um we have a landfill monitoring contract that we do. And then we have two areas that catch the uh the runoff and then that runoff is tested um quarterly. We have made permit on pretty much everything every year for it. They haven't seen a problem. And our methane uh production is quite low at times. But we uh, the areas is the, one of the reasons why we can keep it there is because we have the monitoring downstream before it leaves the site. That's a great question. Uh any other questions on highway? Run and pass time, John. I'm sorry. The uh at the transfer station, I'll just show you what we're proposing at the transfer station. This is uh, it's already been contracted um as far as we bought uh a replacement for our scale house. Right now, our staff is split. Our supervisor is down the hill at the wastewater plant and our staff is up in the scale house. We can really only fit one person in the scale house. Our supervisor is down the hill at the wastewater plant and our staff is up in the scale house. We can really only fit one person in the scale house. So the thought is to then put a modular structure at the scale house itself. A little bit expanded to, then it would house all of our staff, our supervisory staff, a break room, bathrooms for our staff and for um, residents that, that visit the station and give it a much more cohesive design. Our town engineer came up with this layout. It's, it's a very, very nice layout. And in the upper pictures, you can see um, the modular setup. It's a two separate um, units that'll come together. So it'll be a forty feet wide, about forty feet long. And it'll house everyone in, inside. And then I'll be able to have my supervisor on site instead of having my supervisor having to go down the hill to get to his, get to his desk and then come back up the hill later. So I think it's a much better operationally for us. Given the fact that we, we reduce staff by one, we're still working quite well through that, but it's nice to have the additional hand up top. The uh, the transfer station itself, we have thirty-three thousand dollars. Oops, it's twenty by forty. Sorry, it's not forty by forty. I made a mistake. Yeah. So it's ten by forty, ten by forty, twenty by forty. I apologize. Thanks, Bill. The um, uh, we have twenty-five thousand dollars for the second phase of installing security gates at the transfer station. We had monies for up above. Now we need monies for down below. And then we would like eight thousand dollars to replace the variable message sign that's there. That variable message sign was actually the first one we had purchased seventeen years ago approximately, before they became these nice big orange ones. It's this little white box. It used to have three screens. It's only got one screen left. Most of the bulbs are starting to burn out. And we utilize it almost daily at the transfer station to uh, communicate with uh, residents and uh, visitors as far as holidays, openings, things of that nature. The large, you know, the uh, the largest amount of complaints that we get from the transfer station is when we're closed. Saying they didn't know that we were going to be closed. So having, having the capability, this capability is fantastic for us. And we, we'd just like to replace the unit that we have. Parks maintenance on parks equipment. So three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollar request. Uh, we have a replacement of one vehicle to two thousand and eleven. Um, it will include a plow. It's a pickup truck. We have a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars to replace the loader. The loader itself, I don't know if you remember, but we replaced the highway loader a couple of years ago, took that one, gave it to the parks department and then the old parks department loader we got rid of. Now we'd like to replace that one. We got three, four years out of it. So we got the last bit of its usage out. But anytime you get over about seven thousand hours on these machines, it's time to let them go. And it's a two thousand and five, sixteen years old. Um, we have sixty-nine thousand dollars for, to replace an existing ten-foot uh, out front mower. Um, that's a uh, that's ten years old, past its useful life. We have twenty-one thousand dollars for two blowers. Uh, one turbine and then one stand-up unit. We have twenty-three thousand dollars for a cedar. This cedar is able to walk over the top of all of our irrigation heads. Normally when we go on to go out and seed an area, we've got to go out and mark every single irrigation head. So we don't step on them and walk on top of them. This can actually walk over the top of them. So it's gonna wind up saving us a lot of time and energy. Manpower wise to go out and pre-mark an area. And then we have twenty thousand dollars for ride-on mowers. These are our zero turns that are used every day at the parks department throughout the season. It'll replace two of them. Um, they're both, I think, nine years old and the useful life for those are seven years at best. Um, if I get to Parks Fields, request is seven hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. Uh, it's up from four eighty-four, five. We have sixty thousand dollars for field improvements. This is for our baseball fields, the the worn areas on the soccer fields, things of that nature. We have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for irrigation upgrades. Over the years, we've tried to keep this at the sixty mark. We brought it to ninety. We were trying to avoid um, a wholesale replacement of an existing system. Meat Park last year, I think we had over six separate breaks in that system, in that line. That not only feeds the the irrigation in and around, but it feeds the baseball fields, the large baseball field and the clay courts. So when it goes down, we lose the, we lose the irrigation and the wetting on the clay courts as well, which is very detrimental to the clay court. So we're looking at having to replace that entire system. We have fifty thousand dollars. That's an annual fee or an annual um, budgeted item for us for just fences, fence replacement, twelve thousand dollars for, for replacement of a water fountain. We have a, a new line item in our budget for Dunning Stadium. This is for capital maintenance of Dunning. We are now responsible, the parks department is responsible for capital and operational maintenance of Dunning Stadium itself. So we added in some money for small mason repairs, fencing repairs, things of that nature at Dunning. Uh, we have fifty thousand dollars for, to continue our wall repair item at Waviney. Uh, right now I'm working with the, the consult, uh, the landscape architect from the conservancy on our phase two and we'll be bringing phase three forward soon. And then uh, we have three hundred thousand dollar uh, marker out there for any future project for the N C A F. Given the fact that this budget spans um, not just uh, this year, this calendar year, but into uh, next year as well. So we, we, we felt we, they're going to be coming forward with uh, uh, an initiative soon and within the next eighteen months. So we, we wanted to put some monies in our budget to hold it. We had it in there, basically a marker, three hundred thousand dollars for the next four years, just to balance out the capital, let everyone know that this is a, this could be a potential um, expenditure in the years forward. Um, there is the redlined item at four hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. That was for uh, Waviney Park for a playground and then for resurfacing and redoing the existing adult facility, um, fitness area. We, Waviney does not have a playground and the thought was that when we were looking at doing the uh, the adult area to add in a children's playground next to it, so bushes, so that we could uh, keep uh, the kids off of the adult play area. We had a child severely injured, one of her fingers there. Um, thankfully she'll be all right. Um, but the, the thought was that uh, we'd like to take it back, take a little look at it, try to work with the commission, park and rec commission and come up with a location for it and then come forward in next year's budget. So we removed it. And then we have a hundred and twelve thousand dollars for phase two of the Bristol Bird Sanctuary. Um, I'll give you a, a couple of pictures of where we are for Bristol. This is the Bristol Master Plan. We've been working off of that for the past year. Um, we've done some very, very nice work down there, the contractors and the uh, friends of Bristol Park and the Conservation Commission. Uh, if you look, we went through and we did the Green Link Trail from Meat Park all the way out to uh, one oh six. That's one of the reasons why we're looking at extending the sidewalk down Park Street to one oh six and try to connect all that together. And then we brought forward the, the thought of dredging the pond since it was better to dredge the pond now, utilize that material. Put it into uh, in, into the metal that we were creating. And then we had uh, uh, some bridge work done as well. So if you kind of walk up towards the pond, you can see how it's nice and stone lined. And the stream coming in is nice and stone lined. In the background, you see one oh six. Uh, and then a nice seating area. And then from the seating area, this is your view of the pond. So I, I highly recommend you go down and take a look. The, the next portion of funding will be for the replacement of the boardwalk through the wetlands, some additional trail work um, in and out of the park. And uh, at that point, I'd like to let Chris Shipper kind of give you his vision for uh, for this coming year and next. Chris, you there?
Yes, I am.
There you go.
Not at all. I, I, I feel like you guys have been going straight for about two hours. It's almost time for an interlude. So here it is. I'm gonna be very brief and say that thanks to a good plan, a good bid package, a good contractor. Uh, DPW has brought in phase one, you know, ahead of plan and on budget. You might be, you might notice if you drive by that new fence work is now going in and that will be kind of the uh, end of the phase one uh, work. Phase two is really working on the spur trails that lead from the main green link and repairing a wetlands uh, walkway that's in tough shape. Um, I think the other good news to this project is that uh, the friends of Bristol contributed thirty-five thousand dollars for uh, pollinator pathway and bird habitat um, earlier this year and are about to contribute forty-five thousand dollars to install a fernery and build a small pavilion area, which will sort of be a, a midway sort of shelter uh, uh, on, on the park. So um, great planning, great coordination with DPW. And I think that we are uh, taking something that was sort of a backwater. And um, you know, we're in year two of a four-year master plan to have it restored in time for its uh, centennial anniversary in twenty twenty-four. So thank you for your support on this.
Thanks for waiting, Chris. Sorry. I was doing my best.
That's fine.
Yeah. Chris, you should thank all the donors as well. I mean, it's so far, it's amazing what you guys have done over there. So it's hats off to everybody that's put some money in and uh, it's gonna be exciting when it's, when it's over. It really was just uh, an abandoned uh, area over there. We, we've actually walked through and we re, did the ordinance. Uh, the dog ordinance over there and uh, looking at that. But it, it's amazing the difference between just a couple of years ago and now. It's, it's remarkable. So hats off.
The project is good for New Canaan.
Lots of foot traffic now.
Yep.
Okay, the uh, so then the, there were questions about pickle. So I'll just bring up pickle shortly. Um, this is a picture of the uh, of the court area itself. It's on the existing all-season court is now beyond its useful life. Tree roots have damaged the understructure of the pavement, lifted it. We did uh, this kind of gives you a view of what we're proposing, what we're planning. It's already funded. In, in a prior year's budget, but we're looking at five separate courts uh, across, at the end of it, there is a uh, playback wall through here. We're looking at reconstructing that playback wall. So you can either play pickle or you can play tennis off the playback wall itself. I know that there were questions about um, noise in distance. So I had Maria run a, an analysis. She ran this analysis and we found that the nearest residence is two hundred feet, the pond edge is three hundred feet and the meat park lodge is three hundred feet away. So as far as being the best suited or best, you know, cited location for pickleball court, if someone was concerned about noise. This is probably, especially considering that the majority of the frontage is along the railroad itself. So um, we're looking to bring a contract to the board selectmen soon, uh, hopefully by Tuesday and then uh, and then start construction. And uh, we'll be looking at a June to July completion date for it. It'll be a post-tension concrete slab, very similar to what was done at the high school um, itself. And then uh, five courts on top of it. Pickle seems to be the greatest, you know, expanding sport at present and um, I think it'll be a nice adjunct to the town. Yeah. Are there any other questions on Parks Fields?
So Tiger, I have a question. I know it's been scratched, but the Waviney Park Playground, the four uh, twenty-nine was for the playground and updating the uh, adult exercise area?
That's correct. So we, we scratched the entire proposal. So it was, yeah, it was a two sixty-one for one and then, and then the balance for the other. Um, we scrapped the entire thing. In case we wanted to go back to that location, we didn't want to start with one and then build off it. We wanted it to be cohesive. So we pushed everything out one year um, in the hopes that the commission will help us find a suitable location and a suitable design and then we'll come back forward for funding next year.
Okay, yeah, just so it's not just the playground, it's both.
No, it's not. This four twenty-nine was for everything. With a port-in-place surface, similar to me.
Alright, thanks.
You're welcome. The nature center, we have two furnace replacements. Both are past their useful life, twenty-six and twenty thousand dollars. These were included in the building's items, those thirteen small items, but I want, we usually always separate out the nature centers. So you're aware of what's going on there. Um, at present, we don't have any other capital expenditures planned there. Um, except for right now, like I said, the, the parking lot being done. And then lastly, we have the wastewater treatment facility. I won't necessarily bore you with all the upgrades that were going on, but the two largest things that we want to bring note to are, you have an eighty thousand dollar clarifier, drive, replacement and rehab. The clarifiers, we have two of them. They're the large circles with the spinning apparatus in the middle. That drive twenty-two years old, needs, Jimmy's done a great job of keeping it working. The, the uh, the company can't believe that it's actually made twenty years. Most of them don't make twenty years or twenty-two years, but it needs to be uh, replaced and rehabbed. And then we have sixty-six thousand dollars for sewer rehabilitation on Main Street. That's gonna be in situ forming the existing sewer line, sanitary sewer line from Locust to East. Given the fact that ever source is coming in and doing the gas line, aquarium is coming in and doing the water line, and then they're gonna repave the road. We want to go in after they're done, before the road's paved and reline that pipe since it's a quite old sanitary line, quite deep in the road. Um, would be quite costly to, to uh, replace. So uh, we've had this on the hopper for a couple of years, waiting for aquarium to come forward with water main replacement. Now they are, and once they're done, we'll come in and do that. And the rest of it is just general um, equipment replacement um, here and there. Uh, the request is three oh eight. We're proposing for three hundred to come out of our reserve fund. So uh, we'll only be an eight thousand dollar outlet to uh, sewer users. Any questions on sewer? We are done with those two. The um, our budget as it stands is two point nine nine percent, a two point three five percent increase overall. But if we take out uh, the adjustments from the, the board of finance and uh, we would be, we would have been looking at an overall negative one point three five, three seven. So this portion is the end of the DBW operating capital. And then we will go on to building um, use and occupancy next. But if there's, if you have any questions for the rest of my staff, I'd like to say them to allow them to go home or at least turn off their screens and enjoy themselves. So you just tell me, John, if you got any other questions.
Well, I'm good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. And thank, you know what? And while you guys are all still here, thank you Tiger for putting together, I mean, a really comprehensive uh, presentation, even more comprehensive than usual. So you really, you really, you know, went the extra mile and we appreciate it. Thanks.
Thanks, John. No, it would, the questions were great. They were very, you know, I, I love getting questions beforehand. Be perfectly honest with you. Um, so it gave us an idea of where you were looking and what you were looking for. So that really helped. And then it just drives the conversation. Once it drives the conversation, then it drives the knowledge. And you know, and then we're able to kind of tell you what we, what we need and what we, you know, what we think should have and go from there. So I think it's, I think it's a good collaboration. So the uh, the other question was on building use and occupancy. Um, I can tell you that uh, our mandate is, is in our mission statement, which is to serve the needs of the community and preserve current assets for future generations of New Canaanites. So the assets that we have, that's our mandate to preserve those assets. Unless we're told differently, we're gonna preserve those assets. Um, usage itself, we don't necessarily dictate usage. We dictate, you know, that we'll, we'll keep it. For the most part, it's easy for us, right? Police department, policemen in the police department, fire department, you know, firehouse, firemen in the firehouse, right? It's kind of easy, town hall, you know? Then you get into a couple of the ancillary buildings, gets a little bit difficult. It gets a little gray. And at that point, then we need a little help and a little guidance. And then we'll go from there, you know, and, and um, and uh, we, we've tabled items and then brought them back forward again, you know, roofs and things of that nature based upon the town's palette and what they wanted to see. And then we've um, sometimes not take care of a building and, and said that it'll, it'll, it'll go by the wayside. But the building use and evaluation committee completed their report in twelve fif, twelve five seventeen, fifty-six buildings and structures. We added one, which was a donkey barn. We took one away, which was Richmond Hill Garage. So with Meat Park Brick Barn, or we want to call it, and we're still at fifty-six. Um, and then in there, they had basically nine recommendations, right? So they had review the B O E uh, building, repurpose the town hall annex. Uh, start architectural plans for the police department, finalize a records retention policy since we were having storage problems in the town hall for town hall records. Uh, basically defer the renovation or divestment of Vine Cottage, so they could determine what was gonna go forward from there. Make a final decision on the Richmond Hill Garage. Uh, doing de-assessment, de-assession policy, which is basically if we have materials or, or equipment that we don't need, we, we get rid of. Um, we just sold a couple of pieces of equipment from the parks department that were from nineteen seventies vintage. Someone wanted them for uh, parts and things like that. We got rid of that. We had some highway materials that we got rid of. Um, reorganize the three-bay garage at Irwin Park and then come up with a policy for the rental of the five apartments. I'm happy to say that seven of the nine, we got done. So the only thing left is the B O E administrative review and then the policy for the rental of the apartments or, or, you know, the buildings that we might have. Um, so we've, we've accomplished the, the majority of what, what is on the list. Um, and then we'll continue to go forward. The uh, the secondary question came in about building utilization, right? So these are kind of the biggest ones that everyone has a question on, right? So Waviney House, Potting Shed, the Audubon House at, at the Nature Center, which used to be the Laundry House. Uh, the Irwin House, the Irwin Barn, Vine Cottage, Town Hall Annex, Kiwanis Building and the Animal Control Building at uh, the transfer station. So if we look at each one, So if we look at each one, right, the waving house right now, we're under renovation for ADA upgrades. It should be done in June, July. We're having a problem with um, so we we know the source of the materials we need for the tile. But we're told originally now it's going to be a July 1 date to receive the materials, even though we were ordered in a timely manner. We're hoping for a June 1, maybe a May 1. So we can get the low work done. Right now they're working on the Western Ramp and then they'll work on the fire escape. The uh, the potting shed, as we, as I mentioned, we have a design in our in our proposed budget or monies in our proposed budget for a design. And we'll come back next year for the thought of a year round facility for bathrooms, specifically considering the fact that the conservancy is a nice job around the house. And then that area south of the road, there isn't an area that has a that 24/7 bathroom facility. Um, the Audubon House, the we're currently working with the nature center. They'd like to renovate that. We're we're exploring that opportunity. They'd like to see the opportunity for additional classroom space. Um, so we're working with them. Uh, we're trying not to demo. We're trying to see if we can uh, save the building itself or save the framing. We have a structural engineer go in and take a look at the foundation and take a look at the walls. We're waiting for a final report there and then we'll come forward. We did an environmental analysis already. And we'll put all that data together and then come forward with a plan within with the nature center. Irwin House itself, right now, we have planned for either swing space for the police department and it's currently our highway department is using it for what we call COVID spacing, right? So we're starting to get vaccinated. Our older guys are starting to get vaccinated. We had a couple more, thankfully, Jen was able to help us out today. Uh, and get some more in. Um, and the thought is that we don't want everyone in the break room together, right? So, you know, we said, you know, 26 FTEs in a small cafeteria together, you know, shoulder to shoulder. We don't want that. So we want to spread them out as much as possible. And then for storms, for breaks at the during a storm, exact same thing. So we've been utilizing the Irwin House for that purpose for uh, for past couple of months or or more. Um, the Irwin Barn. At present, it's storage, but one of the things that we lack in town is storage space. Um, a lot of the stuff that we have is seasonal. We have, we also store materials for other purposes or other bodies. We're storing the pop up park material in the Irwin Barn. We've been storing the uh, um, the uh, bandstand, so to speak, for uh, God's Acre. That's up at Irwin. We've had to utilize Irwin for um, motor vehicle accidents, specifically fatals. We've had to utilize it for it. So it gives us a covered area. Um, and it's and it's utilized by more than just the parks departments utilized by a lot. Um, and even by some outside entities as far as the beautification league and the and the garden club do some of their work out of that, out of that area. Uh, the Vine Cottage right now, it's been a godsend because we were able to kind of not sequester, but give Jen and her staff an area to work so that they could be there through COVID. So they've been at Vine Cottage now for quite some time and will probably be there for quite some time in the future. The town hall annex is working quite well. Human Services is very happy there. Um, we have an upstairs rental. They're happy and it's a long term rental, so we should we should be good there. Kiwanis Building right now, it's a summer rental for the YMCA. While it's only a part time year of the year usage, it's at least being used. And animal control, uh, it's currently adequate according to animal animal control and the police department, but the PD, based upon the commission last night, last last night's a report from Leon and the month prior, they are reviewing options as to whether or not they might service that out. But overall, almost every single one of our buildings is either being utilized or we have a plan moving forward for it. So if we're not in it, we have a plan moving forward for it. So the only two buildings that were really not in, the potting shed and the Audubon House, neither one of which uh, can have anyone in it at present, but we have plans moving forward for them. So I think that, you know, overall, if we look at everything that we had, we're using everything that we've got.
Can you just comment on on what the plan is for Waveney House going forward and what renovation will be finished and and what the future usage is planned for?
That's the. Yeah, unfortunately, that's not my purview. The uh, the um, it right now, the the thought is it'll still house the recreation department, even though we we have, we have been exploring other locations for the rec department. And then uh, but right now we have monies to finish the exterior work um, to get you into the building on the first floor. At that point in time, we'll have to come back for how to get to the second floor and the bathrooms on the second floor since um, we we tabled that money or the council table that money last year, that that really is in the hands of the Park and Rec Commission um. Uh, at at present whereby if if you're looking at something more than a, you know, a wedding venue or an increased usage for weddings. My personal opinion is you need to hire someone to come in and look at that holistically from a from a an event planner perspective. And have them take over the operation. That's my personal.
So so right now, we really don't, we don't have anything underway that is besides what the old news was, which is, which is uh, how many offices we're using for the rec department on the second floor and the and occasional dining stuff on the first floor and weddings.
That's that's, I'm sorry, I missed the first part. He broke up on me, but the uh,
I'm sorry.
The current, the current usage is proposed to be the the usage going forward, you know? Um, you know, that that's at present, I I don't, you know, um, again, it's not necessarily, you know, while we assist in that, it's not necessarily our mandate.
Well, let me, I'm probably asking the wrong guy then. Uh, who's in charge? Who is in charge of allocating space across all this?
Across Waveney House?
Across across all of the all 56, all 56 buildings. I mean, some of them, as you said, are obvious, but several of these buildings are being used for what is really kind of temporary space. Uh. And I'm not asking you to answer the question. I'm just wondering, you know, who who is responsible for for the utilization plan? Is that Kevin? Is that Bill?
That would be the first selectman. Bill works for me. And if it's not me, then it's.
Okay, Bill. It's not you. Okay, so Bill's maintenance on the building.
Correct. Yeah. In essence, we can, we can provide guidance and, you know, thoughts on it, but as to who goes where, when? That's not our, that's not our mandate.
I got it. And when we look at this relative to the capital plan, there's really not much on this in the capital plan today.
Uh.
Waveney Houses have already committed, potting shed, you're doing a study, Autobahn, you're doing a study, Irwin House, there's basically nothing. Irwin Barn, you've got a roof. Right? Vine Cottage is nothing because you're still, yeah, we don't know whether it's going to sell or not sell or get repurposed again, right? Okay.
Correct. Yeah.
Rich, Rich, it's it's Penny. Um, if you like, I will raise um, this chart um, to the first selectman and to the selectmen's uh, building and infrastructure committee.
I think I think that would be great. I I think it would be good to have a report on what what the plan is with these. And also the other question, and I know this isn't your your question either, Tiger, but you happen to be sitting there, but are we, are we, uh, do we have any plan for moving the board of ed out of rental space? And into into uh, into buildings that we own?
I know, I know, we continue to look at options on that. We haven't come up with a, you know, a final. But I know that it's it's not that it's not being looked at. It's just a question that we haven't come up with a viable solution at present, but we have at areas and ideas to move them around.
And this, this building utilization was actually just very surfacely discussed at the Selectments Committee. Um, and so what I will do is I will be in consultation with Kevin and have included on the agenda for our next meeting uh, in April as to, you know, as to whether or not it's it's going to be moving forward and and who moves it forward.
Thank you very much, Penny. I'd like to, I'd like that, Penny. I don't know. Does anybody, is anybody else interested in that? Uh, it just feels to me like the planning of the buildings and worrying about the buildings is slowed down a little bit from four years ago when the duty report got.
Well, I I think probably what's what's happened, Rich, is that there, I mean, say, when you look at Irwin House, you know, any discussions about what might take place at Irwin House has had this, well, you really have got to kind of wait for the police. The whether or not that space would be swing space for the police department. And then all of a sudden COVID happened. And so the discussions about the sale of Vine Cottage just came to a, you know, screaming um, halt, um, because the staff needs for the health department dramatically increased. You know, and and they could not be housed with their increased activity, you know, within town hall. So um, you know, some things have happened, which has, you know, put little dynamics on on studies of each of these um, various facilities. But that's not to excuse um, that there doesn't need to be some attention because this topic keeps, you know, um, coming up and um, so I will, I will raise it to the committee. And the first selectman.
Thank you, Penny. Does anybody else have any comment on the buildings? I've only got one other subject that's a little bit different than on the, you know, relative to buildings, but a little bit different. It goes back to the duty report. Go ahead. Mike, Mike, I'll make an observation and some of you guys can really be very critical of this analysis, but the 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 capital plan, as it's shown today, is about $26 million for this year and somewhere in that that range for next year. If you take the buildings, the 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 obvious new building, uh, buildings out of that, it's $10 million in this year, you know, in the in the budget we're evaluating. So the 26 goes to 16. Uh, it's it's two and a half, I think, for the library and it's seven, 7.5 for the police station. It so that you're down about 16 or 16 and a half. If you take a look at the the and the accounting depreciation of our depreciable assets in town, it's approximately 10.7 million dollars a year. So it just very, very rough indicator. It seems to me that we ought to be spending at least 10.7 on the maintenance of our assets in the in the town and we're spending money on. That's terrific. I mean, we're replacing lawnmowers. We're putting roofs on all the stuff that is good maintenance. The fact that that you take the two new buildings out and you've got 16 million left, that is $6 million more than 10. Gives me the feeling that, hey, I guess we're spending enough money to be at least be able to keep up with the maintenance or of our current infrastructure. And at least in very gross numbers, that's what I take away from that. Now, I know some of that 16 is growing stuff because Tiger is going to put in some new sidewalks, et cetera. But it gives me some confidence. I don't know whether it gives anybody else any confidence or not, or whether they think that's too much relative to what at least the the uh, I won't say underwriters, the uh, you know, the mathematicians would say, uh, how much of our assets we're using every year, but I I would just make that observation. This gives me a lot of confidence in our capital plan. Uh, and even those $26 million, I think at least we're spending enough to be adequate. I'm very confident in Tiger and and the team that is spending our money and doing it in an efficient manner.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions on buildings?
Yeah, I'll comment. I'll actually agree with you. I actually think that uh, it's a worthwhile exercise. I'm glad you came to the conclusion. You know, or or can give us the conclusion that we are adequately spending on our on our buildings. I know that a couple of years ago, we were, we we didn't have that much money, right? We were focused on uh, uh, cutting cutting costs and the building suffered as a result. And it's one of the major reasons we looked at 56 buildings and said, is this an opportunity to cut costs? Um, but now I have to say, I and a lot of people are very happy that we have these buildings. I'm very happy to hear that the first selectman took the leadership and said, we're going to devote, uh, you know, part of Irwin to swing space. We're going to devote, you know, as part of Waveney, we're going to make use of some of these buildings that were underutilized during COVID, certainly Vine Cottage, you know, could have been sold. Um, at this moment, I'm glad it wasn't. And I'm glad we're making full use of these buildings, but it's a good exercise. I think Penny should be asking the the first selectman after COVID. Do we need the this many buildings and what what is the long term plan? We do have a responsibility to ask that question each year as our needs change. So I would applaud the first selectman for making full use of the buildings and Tiger for making full use of these buildings during COVID. But we should be asking the question. It's a good question, Rich. So thank you, Penny. Thanks, Rich. Let's move on to the next section.
That's it for me.
That's it.
Yes.
I gotta say, Tiger, thank you very much for for what I think are very, very good answers to the questions that that we gave you late late today. And so that we put an undue burden on you.
No, you're fine. Like I said, I I I welcome the questions. I'd rather, you know, because it opens up dialogue, which is exactly what, you know, and then we know we get guidance, right? So we know if we're heading the right path, we're not heading the right path. We have an idea of what the path is, right? Um, um, but, you know, we want to make sure that the council, you know, the the town fathers, Board of Finance, Board of Select and Board of Finance, Town Council all agree. So we, you know, we really appreciate the time. And sorry, we went a little over. I knew it wasn't going to be an hour and a half.
You knew that two weeks ago when you said, give me more time.
Exactly. So, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Tiger. I think next up, uh, last but not least, Steve Benko.
Yeah.
Hi, John, how are you?
Sorry to keep you waiting.
I worked my presentation right away and share it with you. Sorry.
You want to?
I don't, I don't have, I don't have it to share with you. So I have a file, but I don't, I can't share.
Okay, well, you are co-host if you want to, but if you want to just talk us through it, that's fine, Tim.
I haven't talked you through. I I don't have, I'm using, I'm using a tablet, so I don't have the tablet.
That's fine.
Um, yeah, we we put our budget together. We have seven budget divisions, uh, administration program, Wavy House, paddle tennis. We have facilities in the parks, some budget money for that. Uh, civic activities, which are some activities like our concerts and other activities. And Latin Community Center was a big, big part of our community, our adult community gets served by a lot, lot center. And then Kiwanis Park is which is small park and trying to re try to re bigger at Kiwanis Park and for the community use out of it. Um, I proposed budget for this year, uh, total budget is is a million, nine hundred ninety four thousand, five hundred ninety two dollars. The increase of 30,000 over last year, 1.53%. Um, our our recreation program, I'll talk about that first. Uh, we've COVID had an effect on a large chunk of our programs. We were able to uh, put a lot of activities out there during the summer for the people in town. We uh, we we had the pool open, which was, we didn't take it down to residents, the residents, and we had, you know, a lot of people to pull a good tour over there. We didn't have use of Kiwanis Park because of the COVID restrictions and the the fact that the day wide day camp needed more space. So we a lot of them, the majority of the park, five days a week, Monday to Friday, we're going to the residents on weekends, although we had a nice turnout for residents on weekends. We we are, our programs took off, our tennis clinics, we have two instructors and it's amazing how the, how how well it's they've been received and how that program has grown uh, fivefold over the previous years. I know we we we, I think we we bought in about $125,000 revenue just last summer for for tennis. And then we had programs this past summer, this past fall, and they were sold out. So it was, it was really good. We've got our, looking ahead to the spring. Um, we're going to have our youth soccer programs, small, we have about 125 children in that program, but our tennis clinics for the spring, uh, we sold them out, which which is great. Um, we're adding in additional adult paddle clinic uh, starting in the month of April. And I think we can take 48 participants and we've already got 44 people signed up. So uh, we're looking ahead to a summer, the summer season getting getting rolling again. Um, so we we're doing well there. So our our, we did add some money this year to our our uh, program other account. Uh, we asked to increase that because uh, we had success, success in our tennis classes and and our paddle class that we uh, we asked that additional money for that, that that account, Board of Finance did. So uh, that that it's about a $15,000 increase in our budget there, the $44,000 increase. But uh, uh, in addition to that, we, for COVID last year, we did put an attendant on duty at the high school tennis courts and we put reservations there. We did not charge the public for it. And if we are planning this summer is to go ahead and do the same thing, have an attendant on duty, have residents be able to come in, sign up, make reservations. It worked very well. Uh, it it allowed people to show up eight o'clock or nine o'clock or 10 o'clock, knew they had their court. Uh, it it kept a lot of the out of town people out of the courts. And so we plan to do that again this summer. We'll staff them with attend from uh, June, June 1 till to Labor Day. So that'll be good. Um, our total recreation budget is up by is a mid one million, one hundred ninety three thousand. Our total recreation budget is up by, is a mid one million, one hundred ninety two thousand, one fifty two, with sub forty four thousand nine hundred sixteen dollars, about three point nine percent. A big chunk of that is the tenant at the high school and also the increase for the, the program. On the other hand, we, we do bring in, we do bring in a lot of revenue for recreation. Last year. Our actual expenses, one million, forty thousand, twenty thousand dollars. And we bought in six hundred twenty two thousand dollars of revenue, or about sixty cents of the dollar. So we do return quite a bit of money on the dollars. So that's a good thing on recreation. We're looking forward to additional programming and working together, summer conscious going again. Hopefully the COVID rules are going to change tomorrow and hopefully they're going to change again to allow us to have more people. There's some of the restrictions on, on, on the number of people to come to events does hamper what we can do, but we're working around that. Let's see. I don't know if anybody raised a question on administration program, but then I wanted to wave the house one. The Wavy House budget this year is a hundred fifty four thousand, six seventy four. It's an increase of seven hundred dollars for last year's budget, very minimal. We're hoping to resurrect our rental system, rentals of the building and have community meetings and other community activities. Right now, we've, we've pretty much been shut down because of the COVID restrictions. Tomorrow, the state, the new state guidelines go into effect. So for a rental for wedding, we're allowed to have a hundred people. Sorry, tomorrow. We can also have some additional people for meetings. That was our big restriction was we were allowed to have a meeting. We can only have like twenty five people downstairs, given the six foot spacing and everything else. So we're hoping that, that, you know, as, as we go on, if we get vaccinated, if you get through the pandemic, that they stay, continues to, to relax some of the restrictions they put on everything. We don't have a lot of rentals in June, July, because people shied away because of COVID. Everybody's looking ahead to the fall and we have a pretty good, pretty good rental slate set for September and October. With, I think we've got weddings every Saturday and Sunday in September and October. So hopefully we'll be able to get that back to full steam. In twenty twenty, in, in twenty twenty. We had, we had an actual expense of a hundred thirty two thousand, a hundred seventy eight dollars on Wavy House. We bought it a hundred thirteen thousand dollars in revenue. So we bought back by eighty five cents of the dollar. So Wavy does get used. A lot of community groups use it. They can have small meetings with twenty five, thirty people. I know the Rotary Club has made use of it every, every Thursday for their meetings. They have thirty, thirty five people come for lunch. The Garden Club comes in at least monthly and they have eighty five, ninety ladies every, once, once a month for a meeting. We've had other workshops. We've run some of our recreation programs there. That we needed to because we can't get space to the school. So Wavy does get utilized and we can look for ways to utilize even better, but hopefully we get the access from the outside that'll help make it more accessible to some of the older people when they come to the building. The next, the next line item is paddle tennis and we're looking for thirty eight thousand, three hundred twenty dollars, a recent two thousand dollars. One of the things of paddle and Wavy, an administration program, I forgot to mention is that the minimum wage goes to fourteen dollars an hour starting, starting in July. So that, that does affect our part time salary account. So that's one of the reasons for additional, that's one of the reasons for paddle tennis increases. We have to raise it, the salaries. Paddle is very vibrant. We had a great season. I know our, our, we had a, we had about two hundred eighty adult passes sold. About sixty daily passes sold. We had fifty five daily passes sold. Over sixty five senior passes sold. And we, the big increase was the youth. We had almost twenty five youth passes sold. Last year we had three. But our revenues are about seventy four, seventy five thousand dollars. Which is really great. And in fact, last year in twenty twenty, we spent thirty five thousand, a hundred dollars on paddle and we bought in fifty five thousand, a hundred dollars. We bought it out. We returned a dollar fifty cents of the dollar paddle. The paddle's been very vibrant, very busy. You know, we, we've got, we've got great team play now with, with the Fairfoot County League for Women and Men. We have four teams in the Women's League playing and we have three teams for the men's team playing and they're they're all, they're, they're, they're all going full, full strength. We have also a new Canadian Women's Paddle Tennis League and a, and a Canadian Men's Paddle Tennis League. And so there are some members of Wavy that play there and members that play against other clubs in town. So it's, it's all adults in town. So paddle is very vibrant, going very well. We ran clinics this year. All our clinics were very well attended. We sold most of them out for the summer, for the season, the fall. And then again, in the, in, in the winter and then now we like I mentioned, we've got almost the ninety percent of the, of the positions filled for the for, for the, for the spring clinic we're going to run in the month of April. The story is the billing budget is flat, two or three thousand. That basically is heating, water, fuel, electricity for the buildings and the parks, the Wavy House, the paddle lodge, Latham Center. The lights for the turf fields, the girl softball fields, those all come on that budget. So that, that, that budget is pretty flat. Our saving activities budget, the biggest expense there is we do portable sanitation in the, in the parks for the Ferris fields and in the off season when the bathrooms are closed down. That's the one biggest lineup. The other lineup there is, is our summer concert. And we're hoping that we can get our summer concerts back this, back this summer. Those are very popular. Ran twelve or thirteen concerts last year, twenty nineteen. We didn't have it past or because of the COVID restrictions. But we, we hope to have a whole hope, hope to have ten to twelve concerts this summer and we can get more than five hundred people without being put in circles or social spaces. We're working on that. The other big lineup is our lap community center. Our founding director Lynn Bond retired last July one. Aggie Aspinwall, who was her assistant, has taken over as director. Lynn is still working part time to assist Aggie. They're planning and they've together, they've done a great job trying to tackle the COVID hurdle. A lot of our programs are Zoom. We did a lot of work with movies for the seniors and trying to work with them on counseling and where to go. And I know Social Service, Human Services has hired an assistant there who's got a background in, working with seniors. She did work previously in dairy and that. So she's helped Aggie out and been out with some, some questions they've had. So there's a good interaction from Human Services and, and at Latham Center. But Latham is, is a vibrant program and you know, Aggie's working hard to plan for, hopefully we can, we can get back to full swing in September. We're playing and doing some, some programs in May and June to get some people back there, doing some activities. Right now, the, the building is being utilized heavily by the health department for the, all the COVID activities. We're doing testing three days a week. Right now, twice a week or sometimes it'll be three days a week. They're doing vaccinations. We constructed a, 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 a module in the, in the large Douglas room. So it has six, six, six compartments for vaccinating residents. So you know, Latham is very busy right now with that act, that, that expert, trying to help the community with COVID. But it's a big, that's a big program for us. Our budget right now is thirty five, we're pressing thirty five thousand, six seventeen. It shows a decrease. That's kind of deceiving. Because we, we didn't, we did not have a lot of, a lot of, a lot of our programs with our, our outside instructors because of COVID. Some, some did work on, on Zoom. Others didn't want to work on Zoom because they do with personal classes. I think a big decrease, the big difference in the decrease in the budget of seventy thousand dollars is the difference between Lynn's, Lynn's salary and Aggie's salary. And also they did have fun. They, they have, the Board of Finance took out some of the money for the for social security that gets paid in part time. So that, that'll get, that'll get, have to get readjusted as we get back. But the, but Latham is, is, is one of our bigger programs. It serves the adult community, New Canaan and they're, whether they're forty years old or ninety years old, they all get together and they're all, they're all excited. Everybody's everybody's chomping at the bit to get back and get involved. So hopefully we can get things going and starting, starting in, in May and June. The last one, last budget we have is Kiwanis Park and we've got a budget of sixty four thousand, one seventy six. It's a decrease of eight hundred dollars over last year. We will be staffing the park with our lifeguards. We'll hopefully get the park open starting, I think it's June twelfth, we plan to open the park for swimming and we'll have a season go through the end of August. And so we, we have some plans to bring some additional programming in summer. Try and make it more interesting and try and get more residents to utilize it. It's a, it's a nice facility. It's got a sand beach. The water is treated. We test it once a week with, with the Health Department, Stanford. The water, so like I said, it's, it's well, well water, it's chlorinated, it's pumped in twenty four seven a day. So it's, it's a great, a great facility and we're looking to how we can better utilize the park in the off season and how we can bring some more activities into park and so we get more, more community use. So that's one of our goals next year is to try and increase the community use of the park recognition.
Too bad it took a pandemic for us to all rediscover Kiwanis and fall back in love with Kiwanis. Because, I mean, you know, I think you don't miss the controversy of everybody telling you what to do with Kiwanis. It's nice to have, have it back, the whole thing and be able to resume your programming.
It'll be good. We're looking forward to it. We, we hope to have it. We hope to bring some additional things this summer. Like we, one of the, we're working with the library and we're trying to bring a storytelling program there every, once a week for young children, three, four years. So that would be a fun thing. And then we're looking still to try and see if we can put some kind of a slip and slide, the slide on the beach that I make it more interesting for the, for some of the, the ten, eleven, twelve kids. So we're looking, we're looking to do some different things and we have plenty to right now to put a new fence around the, around the playground and got surprises on that. So that'll be done before the season opens. And I know the Parks Department is looking at some tree, tree pruning around the playground. There's some of the pine trees that got too big. And so I know working with Tiger and Bob Moran, the tree wardener, looking to, to remove some of the pine trees and at least prune them back because it's gotten too big. So looking to make some improvements that make, make it more attractive to residents.
Did you want to have a, like a little committee or something for Kiwanis? I, I think it's a great little park. I would love to contribute ideas or I mean, I'm sure lots of people have ideas.
Yeah. Hank Green is a member, member of the Park and Recreation Commission. He's kind of, he's kind of heading, heading a, a committee with Carl Mason and, and Francesca Sigalas is a commission member. And they've got, they've got probably five or six of the area residents that of Kiwanis that they've had a couple of meetings to squish my ideas together. So if you want to contract Hank or I'll have Hank contact you, that'd be great.
Or even a simple survey to the residents. I don't know. But yeah, definitely. Sounds good. I'll do that.
Great, great. I'll, I'll hang contact. So that's the operating budget. Any other questions on it?
Yeah, I've got, I've got a couple of questions, Steve. The Latham Center, is, is it adequate in its space? I mean, you know, our P O C D said that we're supposed to be focusing on seniors. And, and we really have, quote, very little money in the, in the budget except for Latham. It actually focuses on, on seniors. And so I'm just wondering, is there, are there any programs that we should be looking at that you're not looking at as a result of, as a result of money? Or, or space or anything else?
Yeah, that's, I'll, I'll work with Aggie in that because right now she's trying to, trying to meet some of the needs. A lot of it is Zoom and, and people are getting tired of Zoom. So I think she's, he's very anxious to get people back there in person. And as more of the population gets vaccinated, we can do so. So hopefully the state relaxes the guidelines and we can, we can get back to a little more activity.
Well, I got, I got my second shot today and over at Latham and there were three hundred and fifty old people over there with me, right along in the, in the same line. So there's a lot of people that ought to be able to start to do things. Can you also just comment on the ice rink and kind of what the, what the plans are on, on when, when that comes to ground?
That we, we, they have, there's, there's still discussion. We're still looking at sites. We, we met with Jake Granito is a member of the Park and Recreation Commission. He, he has been shared, asked by, by Ronan Siegel, the chairman to kind of head up, head up the, 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 the site selection. And we, we think we have a, the, the originally looking at Kiwanis, but I think we found an alternative site. Yeah, in a, in, in the parking lot at Waviney, by the bathroom building that they work. So Jake is still working with people and that to get, to get some further ideas and cost that will be allowed to do it there. So but they're working on that. I don't have any, I can't report to it to the ice rink because they have, they're still having still in, in looking at areas, trying to decide what works.
Are there any capital requirements from a town standpoint to help with that program? Or is it going to be a hundred percent just funded by the, by the citizens?
I think they, they've looked at, this is separate committees. They, they purchased the rake. They have the rake. They have the compressor. Yeah, it's being stored on site in Wavy Park. I, I think if they're looking at, it'll, it would be probably self sustaining by charge, by charge for people to skate. They are also looking to raise some money to, to, to help, help bolster the cost. So I, I think once they, they get a site, then they can stand and try and put everything together and, and launch the fundraising. That should happen sometime, maybe by the end of May.
But it, but at this point, it's a hundred, it's a hundred percent non-town stuff. We don't have to worry about capital for it. We don't have to worry about anything going forward.
Right now it's not, there's nothing that, that we know that's going to be out of a town budget.
But you should expect, Rich, you should expect that they will ask us to contribute alongside private dollars. Just not yet.
Yeah, I, I, that's what I'm searching for here, John. That's my suspicion as well.
It's, it's, that's what's going to happen. Yes.
Whatever they do, they're going to have to put in a four forty three phase, two hundred amp transformer. That's money.
That's already, that's already at the Wavy parking lot.
Actually, the, the, actually the Wavy parking lot has, has an, that's one asset, the Wavy parking lot, the there is a four eighty, there's a four, four sixty volt transformer, three phase going to the bathroom building, feeds the lights for softball. So we could, we could tap into that, that transformer. That makes that area very attractive. So so you wouldn't have to bring the extra power in.
Yep.
I'd like to make a, a brief comments about Latham. A compliment to Bill Osmond and Tiger and everybody. They took advantage of the building being empty. It has been totally cleaned, thoroughly cleaned and totally repainted with the exception of the Douglas Room. This is now, if you can believe it, this September will be the twenty fifth anniversary of the building. And two of the original ASID decorators who designed the interior of the building twenty five years ago, Alice Burnham and Fiona Sig have stepped forward and assisted us in selecting new fabrics for the drapes in the Douglas Room and the dining room. We had a couple bucks left over from the original fundraising and so the building has a fresh new look and everybody's going to just love coming back into it and also remind you, this is a community center, not a senior center. So we, we welcome everyone from forty to a hundred.
Thank you.
Excellent.
All right, Joe, you want to touch on the pool budget or?
If, if you want to tell us about the pool budget. Yeah, I mean, it's one of our great assets.
It pools are great. We got, got well used last summer. Our, our attendance was actually over, up, even though we didn't have, we didn't have a hundred and ninety five families, our attendance was, was up over, up over, over the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty nineteen attendance. So we had a, we had a great season. We had a short year, which we lost the first twenty days of the season because we didn't get open until like the twentieth of June because of the state restrictions. But the, we were busy every, every day. And I think part of it was because a lot of dads were working from home. So they took advantage. They came to the pool, their kids in the afternoon and a lot of good, a lot of good family time. It was, it was a great, great summer, of course.
I've heard you say that pool use is up, tennis use is up. Paddle use is up. And, and pickleball use is up. Is anything not up in your world?
Well, it's, it's a lot of activities that, that are family orientated have, have really, really, really taken off or individually oriented like tennis and paddle tennis because it's because of COVID. They, a lot of people they got back out and they rediscovered activities, they can participate in. So that, that's really great. And hopefully they'll continue with it if we get through this pandemic. So I think it's good. People, people are getting interested in other activities.
I think you did a really great job to keep a, a nearly flat budget, given the surge in interest in all of the programs that you've provided. So way to go.
All right, the pool, the pool has a budget that we're proposing of five hundred seventy five thousand, six hundred dollars. It's actually down over last year. A little bit, but the, the exciting about the pool is that the in April of twenty twenty two, the bond will be paid off. And that big two hundred thousand dollar egg that we have to pay every year for, for the principal of the bond will be gone. So that's I know we can put, we put some money into our reserve funds because there's going to be some things you need to be done. The pool will be getting leave it at the pool be twenty years old next year. So we need to look at replacing some pumps and maybe the filters. So some, there'll be some expenses, but the idea is that the pool fund, because it's an enterprise fund, will have funds in it for its capital needs. So that'll be good. Briefly, I could just touch on capital. We have a couple items of capital. Want to go there?
Sure.
We, we, we've been doing so a lot of work on the trails and the trails and it got an amazing amount of use this year. I mean, it's incredible how many people are everyday walking. We, we, we've been doing so a lot of work on the trails and the trails and it got an amazing amount of use this year. I mean, it's incredible how many people are everyday walking. And I think the work that we did, working with Tiger and, and the Wavy Park Conservancy and putting in different surface down and certainly running trails really improved them. And, uh, so we have thirty thousand dollars in the budget this year and hopefully we can get some additional funding from the Wavy Park Conservancy. But one of the areas we wanted to concentrate on is the area along the parkway because it, that gets a lot of use and it's a lot of washouts. And so we'd like to fix that area up and maybe a couple of spurs that come off that. So that, that was our goal for the thirty thousand dollars there. Um, we have some money in the, in the budget, this current budget to, uh, repaint the, resurface the high school tennis courts. The paint, if you've been, it was peeling off. Um, I think we just had a bad bi- bad binder course on there. So, um, I talked to the company, the co- to the painting companies. They said, well, you know, we could come in and just do, just touch up the, 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 take the bad areas and peel off and then paint over them. I said, you know, but they said, what you really need to do is go in and strip all the paint off the cords and put a new binder, put a brand new binder sealer course on and then put your paint on top of that. We think that the, the binder course underneath failed. That's why the paint's peeling off so badly. So, uh, we, we asked for twenty-eight thousand dollars to, to come in and, and just to do a good prep on the, on, on the surface so we can repaint. Um, we have some money for athletic field fencing, ten thousand dollars. That goes into the fencing around the water tower turf fields and the baseball backstops at Wavy Park. That is continuous of, of replacing fabric because damage is dead with lost balls and soccer balls and that's. The other items, we have the capital budget, uh, uh, some money for some bleachers. We have some bleachers that are probably twenty years old. They no longer meet the, the code. You're supposed to have a fence around the back. And so like we have two sets of bleachers you want to replace at Wavy Park around the softball fields, baseball fields. And that's for, that's for, uh, about ten thousand dollars. Um, we have some money there for some, uh, additional furniture replacement at Lapham Center. We did replace some of the tables and chairs. There's a few items we have to replace. So, um, some additional folding chairs or whatever. So that's seventy-five hundred dollars. Um, the meat park tennis walkways. We, last summer, we were able to do the walkways from the lodge up to the lower two, lower four courts and, uh, which is course five, six, seven and eight. There's a path that goes along the pickleball court where the pickleball court will be. That goes from the, the tennis shed is down to lower courts. Uh, that's basically all, basically was, is done with millings and it's ruddy and slippery. So we'd like to take, replace that pathway with a asphalt pathway. And the same thing, they're up on above, there's a pathway that walks along the side of courts. One, courts two, and over to court three and four, and where the water fountain is. And then again, it's a path that's done with milling. So we'd like to, we, we surface those two, those two pathways with asphalt paths, which are easier for people to walk onto the milling. Uh, so that, that's for twelve thousand, five hundred dollars. And then the last thing, we've done a lot of work in the colonnade area. And it's got a lot of use. We did put some new furniture. And we want to add an additional table, some additional furniture there on the patio. We put a big patio with one table. And it has four chairs. We have like five or six other chairs. Now they're like that, add a second table. There's a lot of people use that area for lunches and sitting down, just looking out the pond of the vista and enjoying it. So, uh, we put five thousand dollars of budget for that. So that's basically our capital budget. Both holds a hundred, three thousand dollars for this, for the year. What else we have? I think that's about it. That gives you, uh, covers our capital or operating in, in the pool. So I think that comes in four areas.
And the, and the playground, which was pulled out, uh, it was the major, uh, change to the budget by the Board of Finance. That's being deferred or reevaluated and it'll come back maybe in a different form next year?
Well, we, that's big, Wavy Park, um, we were, there was the sped net, which was the, uh, for the, some of the handicapped children. And they, they, they went out and raised about fifty thousand dollars for the, or sixty thousand dollars for the, uh, the, the exercise area at Wavy Park. And a lot of young old children use the equipment for playground equipment. It's now redesigned for that. So, uh, what we're looking at is going to, to put a new border around it, put a, a port place surface under the equipment. Because right now we have wood chips. This is not, this is not great. So yeah, part, part of that big, part of that money was to replace some of the equipment. His equipment now is twelve years old. Um, and also replace, uh, replace with a support place surface underneath it, which, uh, would be, be a better service to, 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 for people to work out with either their exercise. To try and, and help with it, with the young children who, to get them off the exercise and prevent it at the old playground. Uh, Tiger and John had looked at, uh, putting in a small playground, right adjacent to the, uh, to the, to the exercise. So that we have an area in the park for young children. If dad's playing softball or one of their siblings is playing soccer on the soccer fields or playing softball with a girl softball fields, there'll be an area where mom, mom or baby should take young kids over. They could play on the playgrounds. Uh, so they're, they're looking at, at how, how the whole thing would come together and what the exact cost for the project. And so that's why the difference.
Got it. Any other questions? No more questions for Parks and Rec? I think you must be doing a great job.
No, thanks for your help. Appreciate your, all your support.
Thank you, Steve. And I'm, I for one am very much looking forward to the Wavany Concert Series. When does that start?
I hope to have something, we hope, we hope to have, be able to do something, maybe be the mid, the last week in June. We still have to get the numbers of people. Right now they say we can have five hundred people, but they have to be, you have to paint like ten foot circles that are six feet apart and you have to sign people to the circle. That's a lot, that's a lot of work. So hopefully we can get that all restricted and it's unrestricted. People can sit, it allows us to sit, groups are socially spaced. That would be better. So.
Well, that sounds like a plan.
Forward to having, because I miss the concert. They're great.
Fourth of July.
Was that?
Fourth of July demo.
Fourth of July, that's, that's, we, we can plan for the fourth of July, but we're still, we're still gonna maximum five hundred people. So we, hopefully they'll, they'll be, they'll relax that number of people who come to the event like.
The president said twenty-five people in your backyard.
It's time to subdivide it.
If they're close relatives, if they're close relatives and they have masks on, they've been double vaccinated.
I know.
We're hoping to be there.
I don't think so.
Uh, it's gonna be tough. I, I'm not sure we're gonna get it, but we got our fingers crossed. But we have to plan for it. So we're, the committee's met. We, we've got a contract with the fire company. We're doing everything else. So we're just waiting to see what the state's gonna say.
Well, thank you, Steve, for all you do. It looks like a good, clean budget. We had passed muster with the Board of Finance and, uh, not too many questions tonight. So thanks for all you're doing under a really challenging year. And, uh, if everybody wants to raise their hand, if they support adjourning the meeting, do I have a motion to adjourn? Uh, there's Butterworth and Townsend, all in favor. All right, there we go. We're adjourned. And I guess I'll see you next week for the third presentation and then the public hearing. Bye, everybody.
Bye-bye.
Good night.